Good morning. We're going to begin with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And for our invocation, we have, I believe, Father John Salem, who is the, and if I got that wrong, please correct me, sometimes I am, the pastor of St. Elijah. I'm going to miss that out. We just did this. Antiochian? Did I say that right?
Antiochian.
Antiochian.
Tomato, tomato.
You sure did take us back to the history of Christianity with that one, so thank you. But the Antiochian Orthodox Christian Church, so please begin, Pastor.
Let us pray to the Lord, Lord have mercy. Almighty God, our help and refuge, the fountain of wisdom and tower of strength, who knows we can do nothing without your guidance and help. Assist us all, and especially this council, and pray and direct us to divine wisdom and power, that we may accomplish our tasks and whatever we may undertake to do faithfully and diligently, according to thy will, so it will not only be profitable to ourselves, but to the community and to the glory of thy holy name. And we pray to keep this city safe, free from all plague, from all famine, and that God keep us away from all discord, but unite us through his holy name, the Father, and the Son, the Holy Spirit, and on endeavoring unto ages of ages. Amen.
Thank you. And then we have our country's Pledge of Allegiance, and Zoe Temple will lead us in the pledge.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. And I want to say thank you again to the pastor and to Zoe. It was an honor to meet you both. And with that, we'll go to item two and call to order the City of Oklahoma City's City Council meeting. All right. And then we'll go to item three, which is from the Office of the Mayor. We have none, so with that, we'll move forward to item four, which is items from council. Item 4A is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on July 5, 2022, and a final hearing on July 19, 2022. And what this does is amend Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code pertaining to financial disclosures, to revise the current gift disclosure regulations for city councilors, to require the filing on an annual basis rather than a semi-annual basis, with a disclosure threshold of $600 annually instead of the 300 semi-annually, and to set the disclosure filing deadline as February 1 for gifts received in the immediately preceding calendar year. This item comes from Ward 5's Councilman Greenwell, and I'll just turn it over to him.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And this really is just a minor adjustment. The current ordinance requires us to submit the report the day following the reporting period. This just gives us 30 days to file the report, and we're moving it from a semi-annual basis to an annual basis, so it's more just clerical and administrative type changes. The intent is still going to remain in terms of adequate disclosure. It's just the administration of those disclosures will be a little bit more workable, I believe. So, thank you for the introduction, and that's all I have to say, and I'd be willing to offer any suggestions or modifications to this.
Thank you so much. Do we have any comments from council or from city manager or city clerk on this item?
No.
Okay, and I believe we take this with the vote to introduce it, is that right? All right.
I'd like to move it then, please.
You're welcome to do so, and then do we have a second? We have a second. Cast your votes. And council approves unanimously this item, and we will see a public hearing in a couple weeks, right?
Yes.
And then the final vote will take place on July 19. Thank you all so much, and thank you, Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you.
We move on to item 4B, and this is a resolution declaring an extension to December 31, 2022, of the Penalty Reduction Program, which originally began on July 1, 2019, for depend, excuse me, for defendants with cases in warrant status for Class A offenses that occurred on or before June 30, 2020. This comes from our Judiciary Committee, and traditionally, at least in recent history, that takes us to Ward 8, Councilman Stonecifer. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. For those that don't know about the Penalty Reduction Program, it is a program that we started in 2019. We had at the time 116,000 Class A warrants on the books, which meant if you had a warrant and you were driving and you got pulled over for speeding, you were probably going to go to jail. And so we wanted to deal with the backlog and try to reduce the number of those warrants at the municipal courthouse. As a result, we came up with a program that we started, as you said, in July 1, 2019. We thought it'd last about a year. We thought we'd collect maybe 50, 60, 70,000. We kept extending it because of the pandemic. The results showed us something quite different, and that is closed cases to date, 6,066 dismissed failure to appear, 2097, and total collected to date, 956,246. It's been a successful program. I thank the Judiciary Committee for supporting that, and I would ask for a vote that extends this program, which has been so successful. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I just want to also thank you for your advocacy on this. I know it's so important. I just have a question. This might be more for Chief Worley, but I'm wondering, when it comes to the success of this program, what it would look like and what's going on already when it comes to folk who are experiencing homelessness? Who might have the warrants, like, how does news get to them?
So why don't we let LaShawn?
Oh, wonderful, LaShawn's here. That's great. Yes, thank you.
And so we'll let, LaShawn Thompson's our court administrator. We'll let her speak to this. They're really the ones that administer the program.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. LaShawn Thompson, Court Administrator for Oklahoma City Municipal Court. Currently, right now, we have a community court model that is in place for individuals that are experiencing homelessness. So, we partner with the Homeless Alliance. So if an individual has any outstanding citations, they can work with their case manager, and we actually bring that court model to the Homeless Alliance quarterly. So there is a mechanism in place to address those individuals that are, have outstanding citations, to eliminate those obstacles to housing, those barriers.
The other thing I'd say on that is, Crow and Dunlevy, the law firm, and can you remind me of the lady's name that's been quite?
Amy Madgerwee.
And Amy and the firm have volunteered their time to make this program work.
I think that's wonderful. What about folk who haven't made their way yet to the Homeless Alliance, but might be at an encampment or panhandling? What can we do? What work can we do? This is just an issue that came up recently, so I'm not, this is not an abstract.
Well, we're in the process of launching a marketing campaign, so we're going to put some signs on the bus benches. We're going to also put some information in the different agencies, also some hang tags inside of the buses, so that way, the release went out, yes, I mean, last week. So hopefully, if an individual is experiencing outstanding citations and they may not be in the system, hopefully, they will call municipal court, so we can get them set up and get them, get them involved in the process.
Thank you for speaking publicly to that. I didn't know about the marketing campaign that's coming. That's great. And again, thank you to everyone who's been such advocates. I know Councilwoman Nice has been as well, so thank you. I think we need to make a vote on this, is that right?
Yes.
All right. We have someone who'd like to make a motion? And a second. Cast your votes. Council passes this resolution unanimously, and thank you all again for your important work. That takes us to item C. And then what would you want to do? I know we have C through at least F. Do we want to speak to all of them, or do you want to speak one at a time, Councilman Stonecifer?
What I'm hoping to do, if it's okay with you, Vice Mayor, is cover C and D first, then separately cover E, and then, just to report to you on item F, I have a conflict, so I'm going to have to recuse myself, and I think Todd's going to take over on item F. But as far as C and D are concerned, this is the appointment of two of our full-time municipal judges. We present to Title 11, it is our judge, our job to pick the judges and then fix their compensation. We also stagger this, and so we have two appointments coming up almost every year. And the one thing I'd like to say before I do move for the resolutions approval of Judge Glidewell and Judge Kiffin is, we just got our judicial survey for 2021, and I passed it out. And I've been doing this a long time, and one of the, one of the factors, there's four factors, strongly agree with what's going on, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree. And I have never seen ratings, since I've been on this committee, as high as we received this year from our four judges. They are at a 71% or above, strongly agree with the work that they're doing. There's two really important categories that I always look at on this survey, is the, number two maintains an absence of bias, and number nine maintains an appropriate judicial temperament. All four of our judges scored exceedingly high. The reason that's important is, the first time people come and deal with the city oftentimes is through the municipal court process. And we have great judges who serve the public well. There are a couple of comments I'd ask you all to look at at the back. It's the next to the last page. I'll just read a couple to you. "It is always a pleasure to practice in the municipal court of Oklahoma City. It is similar to a general federal court. Number two, Oklahoma City Municipal Court employee staff and the municipal attorney are the best in the state. I have appeared before at least 50 municipal courts in the state of Oklahoma, and I always know that the experience in the courtroom will be one of respect and fairness. It is one of my favorite courts in which to appear." Next one, "Best crew in my 47-year practice. All are kind and professional. Each of the judges listed above are a great asset to the Oklahoma Municipal Courts. We are blessed to have each of them. Every time I've had court, it's very professional, the staff is courteous, and courtroom adequate is taken seriously." These are outstanding comments. I could go on and on, but I just want everyone to know how proud I am of LaShawn and what we're doing over at the municipal courthouse for dealing with the public and having great judges to serve the public. So at this time, I would move for the approval of resolutions C and D, for C and D.
Will you take those with one vote, Kenny? Or is that, okay, we got that. Thank you so much.
I'd like to second that, but I'd also like to make a quick comment, if I may. I have limited interaction with the four municipal judges, but I have a more in-depth interaction with one of them and on a weekly basis. And what Mark has says is absolutely true, both in their professional role as a municipal judge, but also in their personal lives. I mean, they're just tremendous people of character, high character, and they carry out their duties seriously, but again, with a kind heart. And we, we had a video prepared of, of some of their activities, and unfortunately, it did not capture the story that I was hoping it would, and we've got to also extend our appreciation to LaShawn. All of the administrative staff, especially when COVID hit, it was a big challenge to keep the municipal courts open, and they did a tremendous job in terms of allowing the processes to continue. And so I agree with everything you said, Mark. Both the judges and also the supporting administrative individuals have just done tremendous. We need to highlight them somehow more than what currently occurs, but anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to share? All right, we'll cast your votes. This is for items C and D. Passes unanimously. And then I too would like to extend my gratitude to LaShawn for their work. And I think this takes us to item E?
Yes. This is a resolution designating Judge Kiffin as vice presiding judge. I can't say enough about Judge Kiffin. He's well-respected by his coworkers. The lawyers that come before him, whether it be from the Public Defender's Office or the Criminal Branch of Law, speak so highly of him, and so I'm honored to make this motion, this resolution, designating him as vice presiding judge.
Does anybody else have any other comments? Great. Well, we have a motion, it sounds like, on the floor, so we can have a motion in a second, please. And then cast your votes. Council approves that resolution unanimously, and then this is the one you need to recuse yourself?
Yes, I'm going to turn it over to Todd Stone at this time, please.
Thank you so much. And that takes us to Councilman Todd Stone.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I will go ahead and move item 4F for approval.
Okay. We have a second. And then cast your votes. Council approves that item unanimously. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Todd. This takes us to item 4G1, and this is a resolution ratifying the municipal councilor's initiation of an action in the District Court of Oklahoma County for declaratory judgment that the activities at 2900 Brownstone Road constitute home sharing, and that a license and special exception are required, and an application to temporarily and permanently enjoin the use of the property at 2900 Brownstone Road for home sharing. This comes from Councilmember Stonecifer. We are also able, if you look at G2, to enter into executive session, but Mark, would you like to give us a little bit of context here and then?
Sure. And one thing, well, I recused, and I was remiss and failing to point out, we have an excellent judiciary committee. It's made up of David Greenwell, Nikki Nice, JoBeth Hammond, and they played a part in all of these selections. As far as G1 is concerned, this is an issue that we had come up a couple of years ago, and I refer to them as party pads, and it, it deals with noise, it deals with trash, it deals most importantly with safety, where you have a two-car driveway and 20 cars out in the streets. It's, if there's a problem for fire or IMSA to get into that area, it just creates a problem when these, these type homes crop up. It's called home sharing, and they don't have a license to do this. And so we went through a lengthy process to come up with how to deal with this a few years ago, and I was going to let Laura just explain a little bit where we are procedurally with the lawsuit and, and how we're dealing with it at this time, please.
Good morning, Laura McDebitte in the City Attorney's Office. So as Councilman Stonecifer just referenced, this particular property, we've been receiving complaints on it since it started home sharing in roughly March of 2021. Some citations and notices of violation have been issued, but the activity has continued. And it's a fairly large home. I think it advertises maybe eight bedrooms for rent. So it's large gatherings, and on Friday, we filed a lawsuit in the District Court for Oklahoma County to seek an injunction to stop the home sharing activities at 2900 Brownstone.
And I may say this wrong, and correct me if I do, but, but what happens here is they just pay the fine and keep doing what they're doing.
Right. Comparatively, I think our citation is a relatively low fee when they are, or fine rather, when they're renting this particular property out for, depending on the platform between VRBO and Airbnb, for $900 a night. So the citation is more or less a cost of doing business.
Yeah, and the other thing is that we may go back and revisit the ordinance, and as you continue to get penalties or citations, raise the, the price of those citations as a deterrent.
So this item just says, I mean, explain to me again, what will, especially in light of what council members saying there, like, what would this actually do to limit?
You're ratifying the acts of the municipal councilor's office in filing this lawsuit and proceeding with a hearing for a temporary restraining order.
Okay.
Yes, this is just on that particular property, that one property.
Got it.
May, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I remember those hearings, and we had a lot of individuals.
Because I remember those hearings, and we had a lot of individuals advocating for this, allowing this to take place, but we also had concerns from citizens who anticipated perhaps situations like this. And it seems to me that if a particular home is identified as having recurring problems, do we have to go through a lawsuit, or could we, I just tried to remember that there used to be something in place that said, when situations continually occur, problematic situations, that they would somehow lose their ability to continue to be designated as a home share.
So, this particular property is not licensed for home sharing at all?
Oh.
So, there's not a license for us to revoke?
I'm with you.
So, that's how we've?
We, we do have a procedure.
Yeah.
If they would apply for a license.
Okay, thank you.
They're just ignoring the license process.
I didn't pick up on that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that context. Do we have any comments from council on this item? Okay. And do we have someone who wants to make a motion in a second then? We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Council passes it unanimously. Thank you so much. And that takes us away from items from council and into item five, City Manager Reports, and I will turn it over to City Manager Craig Freeman.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, first, we have Zach Craig with the Convention and Visitors Bureau to give us the quarterly report for FY22, the third quarter report for FY22 for Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Well, good morning, Council. Always enjoy coming here and giving you an update on my favorite topic, which is the visitation economy here in Oklahoma City. And I'll start off by saying, I've got good numbers to report to you. Want to share with you just one metrics today that I think is relevant. As we look at fiscal year '22 through 11 months, year to date through that fiscal year, the city has collected a total of $15 million of hotel occupancy taxes, and that compares to same time last year of 9.8, and compares pre-pandemic same time period to 4.2 million. And so, overall, just based on that metric, things are certainly going in the right direction for the visitation economy. And I think we've spoken about it in the past, but, you know, that, that momentum for us is because of the diversified mix that we have with our visitors. And that stems from everything, from equine to sports to leisure, and also to our brand-new, beautiful convention center or convention business. And I want to give you an update. Oh, what a year makes as far as a difference with the amount of volume that we've had at the convention center. For the calendar year, year to date through the month of May, at the convention center, we've hosted 69 events. We've welcomed 98,000 attendees, and that's versus same time last year, 34 events and 38,000 attendees. So, again, big difference there, and I've got to commend leadership at the convention center. I've got to commend leadership here as well at City Hall. Sue Hollenbeck is very instrumental with what we're doing over there as well. Speaking of something else I'm really proud of is, over the last couple of weeks, we're coming off just a great visitation to ban generator, and that's called the Women's College World Series. And what a wonderful stretch of a couple of weeks for Oklahoma City, not only from shattering attendance records and generating incredible economic impact, and we're still digging through those numbers right now, but what I want to talk about is the earned media value that we've received from not only ESPN, but certainly that first weekend, the wave, the primetime slides on ABC. And it was tremendous. That media outlet reported for that first weekend approximately 1.3 million pairs of eyeballs were looking at each one of those games. And when they did that, and I don't know if you watched it on TV, there were so many beautiful cuts of our community as you came in and, and broke out of commercial. So, you saw our cityscape in our green space, and our name was everywhere on the logo and within USA Softball Hall of Fame Stadium. So, Craig, if you're listening, not Craig Freeman, but Craig Cress, thank you and your staff for really a job well done. And I want to make one more note about that, since I'm in front of you today, is thank you all for your support with the pathway that connects Remington Park to the stadium. I was there on the first Saturday. I'm gonna tell you, it was well-used, and there was a lot of positive feedback. And I think more importantly, both our residents and our visitors were safe. We kept them off the street. So, thank you again for that. Moving on, got two more things, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have specifically on Q3 financials, or the scope of work, or anything else that's on your mind. But want to mention from a marketing standpoint, over the last 60 to 90 days, we have developed and rolled out a new visitOKC.com, and if you haven't seen it, check it out. And call me or email me, and let me know your thoughts as it relates to that website and the three aligned microsites with it. Something else I think is pertinent, we just hired a new multimedia manager, and so you're gonna see a lot of new imagery in own content, and specifically the use of video as we move forward in some of our marketing initiatives, which I'm really excited about. And then lastly, we're working with our local advertising agency, and we're probably at late-stage conversations right now with new creative concepting. So, meaning the way that we package these ads, the look, the feel, the tone of them, it's gonna be different as we embark in fiscal year '23 as well. Finally, I wanted to share with you, we're staying close to all our developers in the hospitality space from Okana to Maps4, but I want to highlight one, one, one Maps4 initiative, and that's the Claire Luper Civil Rights Center. We welcomed Leonard Benton and Christina Beatty to our commission meeting last week, and if you all have not heard Christina Beatty speak, you need to book her, because she is dynamic and very passionate about this initiative. And so, as they grow staff and as they work and move from concept to more creation, we're here to support them, amplify their message as well. So, with that, I will pause, open up for questions.
Thanks for your presentation. Do we have any comments or questions from council?
Just one, and if you have any ability to relay this back to the NCAA, because I think they were involved. I agree with you, it was a great event, the Women's College Softball National Tournament. But I did hear from one person who came in from Indiana, and he's been coming to this event for over 10 years, and really speaks highly of Oklahoma City. But because he and his family are so used to buying tickets, they're on the list and they always get tickets, and included in the certain level of tickets are reserved parking. Well, so they drive all the way in, and from Indiana, and they go to the event, but all the parking's full. And it just seemed like if they're provided special parking, the NCAA, who I assume is running the event, needs to make sure that there are sufficient spaces for however number they sell. And so, just wanted to, if you do have an opportunity to pass that along, that if, if they are going to offer closed parking, and these are older people, my age and older, it's kind of an important part of it, so.
That's good feedback. Thank you, Councilman. You're gonna have lunch with Craig Cress and his team, doing a debrief, and I'll include that in that.
Thank you.
Thirty-eight events last year at the convention center, 69 events this year. What's 2023 gonna be like?
Well, let me, let me switch gears. When we look in the future, and I've mentioned this before in front of you all, we kind of look at citywides, or what we deem multiple hotels that use our convention center. And I'll share with you in the past, let's go back to the Cox Convention Center, really a historical high based on our threshold is eight citywides on how we're, on how we're measuring it right now. That's, that's consumed throughout the year. We have 12 right now that are on the books for fiscal year '23, but one thing I wanted to underscore is eight of the 12 are new audiences. And so, we get new people that come here, experience everything that we're doing in our ecosystem and our quality of life, and go back and sing praises about Oklahoma City. So, 12, eight of 12 are new.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next presentation that we have is Mike Knopf, Executive Director with the Riversport Foundation, to give us quarterly report from the Riversport Foundation.
Well, it is the first day of summer, so that means a lot for us, as we really get cranking over at Riversport. Yeah, I kind of echo what Zach was saying in, with regard to, obviously he walked out, but we, yesterday, we had the new CEO of US Rowing come to town, and she had never been to Oklahoma City before, even though we've been a big player in that sport. They're headquartered in Princeton and was just blown away, not just with the river, but the city, and really recognized we're in many ways leading the way and setting an example. So, it was, it was really great to hear her. It's always good to hear that when somebody from outside comes to town and has that impression. So, David, if you want to go ahead and, so, this is our financial update. Currently, our total revenue is up, the expenses are slightly down. This is through April. Obviously, through May, we did receive a large grant, so that contributed support will, will be reflected there. We are, we are very optimistic for the summer, just from what, you know, we're seeing so far. Again, we're in that zone of driving people to the river, and you'll see a little bit later about some of our, our strategies with regard to marketing and advertising, and also how we use events to propel more interest and activity at the river. So, the one dynamic that we've had, we've had to overcome through the last couple of years of COVID, and I've mentioned this before, is our staffing issues, and they still remain, although we're, again, optimistic, because we did just receive word that we will be receiving an allocation of international, or visas for international raft guides. It's a little late, so they won't be here until July, but that will help us in that really peak period. So, go ahead. I wanted to mention a few things that we've had going on. We had National Learn to Row Day, and I did visit with Councilman Carter about this, because it was in his ward, because we did it at Lake Overholster this year, and it was great to see the turnout from the community. It was a free day for people to just experience the sport, and have had a lot of people now get involved in, in rowing who would never have thought to otherwise. So, that's something we're reintroducing ongoing, open rowing, call it, program at Lake Overholster to, to get that going. Go ahead. And then private events continue to, our team is really doing a great job bringing some large private events in. I wanted to highlight this one in particular. Brahms had a complete buyout one day. You can see how they customized a map for Brahms and had tremendous feedback. They, they indicated wanting to come back next year, but it does show, we've kind of built the venue to a point now where we can accommodate those large-scale private events. And one of the pictures on the left is you see our new, kind of our membrane structure, so we can have a lot of people inside. And, and it really is, it provides for a, a nice outing for companies, and we can keep people active throughout the day. So, also, in the bottom-right hand corner, you can see our, our new esports area that was done by Chad Ford, the Ford Foundation, Ford Family Foundation, so that's been very popular as well. Go ahead. And then school engagement. As we were going into, at the end of the school year, we had a large two, we call them school days, lots of schools coming down, enjoying the venue again, involved in a variety of different activities. You can see, we actually have a curriculum for cardboard boat racing and building, and so the schools participated in that, really enjoyed that, had, again, a lot of great feedback. We see that event really growing year in. It's, it keeps growing, so we may have to add days in the future. Go ahead. Summer camps are well in, if you go down there today, you'll see a lot of little kids running around. And I wanted to highlight this picture, because it underscores and illustrates the importance of indoors, because you know that we've had some rain this year, and when you have, you know, 150 kids in your venue getting ready to do things, you gotta have something to do when you get a rain out. And so, the ski machine has become very popular in, in our indoor rowing tank, and so we've been able to really do things that we weren't able to do in the past because of having some of those indoor features. The kids are having a blast, having a lot, again, great feedback. We're sold out for most of the season, so it's been going very well. We have adventure camps. These were provided for free for, for some of the kids that have come through our, our Opportunity Day, which you'll see. And then we, we also have our rowing camps, our kayak camps. So, a lot of different ways to engage kids. Go ahead. I wanted to just mention this, because this shows the pathway for kids, so kids get engaged, and then ultimately, they ended up at a place like this. And so, we had a lot of kids from Oklahoma City and Sarasota last week. That tower may look somewhat reminiscent here, because Sarasota really came and studied our venue, and they built a world-class venue, and they had the Nationals there. We had top eight in the country finish among our kids, so it was really, really exciting to see the growth and the development of the program and the opportunities these kids get. Go ahead. I wanted to highlight this, and we're not, believe it or not, Oklahoma is gonna be the, truly one of the centers of the whitewater world, not only because we have this world-class venue that we, that we operate, but in eastern Oklahoma, the Walton Foundation has funded a $30 million new whitewater park that will go. It's a diversion from the Illinois River. And then Tulsa is doing a whitewater park or project that's currently under construction. Nothing of the scale of what we have, but there are two very significant projects that will continue to bolster and build the sport in the state. Go ahead. This is, since we last reported, we were bidding on international events. I'm happy to say we received those international, we were awarded these events. The, the one that I would highlight, you know, the most is that one of the 2026 World Championship. That's a massive event. It's over 60 countries will come to Oklahoma City. They'll be here for a month nearly. They'll come a couple times in advance. So, we are really positioning the river and Oklahoma City as a, you know, really international city from a perspective of water sports. And then other events that will lead up to that, and we, you can see other, we have a partnership with Sarasota, so we've kind of created, we have created a consortium, so we together worked on bringing international events to America, and that was very effective. So, there, there will be a lot of activity in the coming years, starting with this August, which is kind of a, normally, you have a couple of years to plan for a World Cup or a Super Cup, but, you know, we, we took those events that were to be in Russia, and they'll be here in August, or August the 27th. Go ahead. Just, I'm gonna cruise through these real quick, David. So, we had the, we, this spring, we had the freestyle team trials, which is really great, another whole sport. Great feedback on that. You can see they do flips and tricks. It's a judged event, kind of like gymnastics on the water. Go ahead. We had the Pan American Championship. Lots of teams from Central and South America, Canada here, and the Team USA debut in Paris. And again, we have, I believe, the best venue for that. Lots of great feedback from those teams. Go ahead. Then the Central Youth Championship, largest event ever for this. This was in May, and that was the qualifier for that Florida event. So, pretty interesting in terms of the growth of rowing in this region, and we're the hub of that. So, all those teams come here. As a side note, I saw Mark Cuban at the Sarasota event. His daughter is rowing for a private school in Dallas, so now I guess we can expect to see him at our regattas that we have in the coming years. So, go ahead. Opportunity Day, this is very exciting. I want to thank Councilman Nice for, for her involvement in such a successful event. We had over four, over 450 kids from northeast Oklahoma City, and also Crooked Oak that came and heard R.C. Cooper and got to get an experience, learn about rowing, got to do all the different activities. Go ahead, David. Go ahead, David. And R.C. has become very involved in what we're doing. In fact, we have other events now planned. On July the 1st, we're going to be showing a Most Beautiful Thing on the side of the Finish Line Tower, which will be a kickoff to kind of the July 4th weekend that will be open to the the public. And then you can see River Bowl. That's an event that we're working with Oklahoma City Black Alumni Coalition, and that will be in August, and it will be a gathering at the river for the community and engage in a lot of community events around river sports, which we're, we see is kind of another step, another way to really engage the the community, and hopefully, it'll then lead to teams in those schools, as we've been talking about. And we see a lot of them, there's a lot of kids in our camps, so we we see that naturally that's going to happen this fall. And then several other events with the, you can see kayak football among our Team River Runner, which is disabled veterans that are using the whitewater, and many different activities, Mom and Me at Lake Overholster. Go ahead. And then I just mentioned with Thrive Outside, again, a lot of kids in our camps through that. We've had over 386 camp scholarships awarded. This is a partnership with the Outdoor Foundation. You can see OU Department of Educational Psychology is involved now. We have new partners. Go ahead to the next page. And this is a list of all the different partners that are involved in this program to basically build and and infuse outdoor culture among our our Oklahoma City youth. Go ahead. And then just, we did receive additional funding from the Outdoor Foundation. They see Oklahoma City as really a national model for how we've been able to implement this program. It was a pilot program, and and then we also have the Bike Club, which is another event program that we support. Go ahead. Red Bull Rapids, so I'm going to just, this is August 27th, tied with the Super Cup and the World Cup. We encourage, it'd be great if the city council had a team. It is a, you build a boat and you send it down the rapids. It's a, it's the first time they've ever had this event in North America. It is televised on Red Bull TV. It's it's quite the thing, and we're getting a lot of interest in that.
Can we use Todd's boat?
What's that?
Would it be okay if we used Todd's boat?
That might be an unfair advantage. Todd's is going to put his in in use here in a couple weeks, but yeah, but no motors allowed, so I think the rapids wouldn't be very friendly to the to your boat. World Paddle Sports Festival, again, that's the same weekend, so we're, the ICF is working with Red Bull and us and really integrating, this has never been done before, so we're going to have the World Cup of Stand Up Paddleboard, the Super Cup with Sprint, this is all televised as well, so so it'll be a fun day at the river. Go ahead. Then, right after that, we have the Swift Water Rescue Conference and Championship. Teams from all over the country are coming, even France is interested, New Zealand and coming here to to our whitewater park, and they will have a full-on conference. And then a new thing is this, they'll compete, and they'll compete in all the different safety techniques that they've, that they'll be learned, rescue techniques that they'll learn. Go ahead. And then I wanted to mention a few things about operations. Safety continues, obviously, is our number one priority, really strong, no issues to report with in that regard. I already mentioned International Raft Guides, continue a lot of maintenance and deferred maintenance related issues we're having to attack. You can see the bottom left-hand picture was our major rains, I mean, just overwhelmed the river and over, I mean, it's among the highest I've seen the river in some time. Lake Hefner, if you hear this, I did want to mention this, that with those rains, the ceiling collapsed in that building, and so we have not been able to have any programming at Lake Hefner, and so that's on pause right now until we figure out a solution there. And so go ahead and go to the next slide. And then our advertising campaign, this just gives you a snap, a look into our strategy and what our goals are with in that regard, our budget, how we're targeting the demographics. We're working with Jordan Advertising on that. And and it is, you should see it, it is now in motion. Go ahead. And this is the mix, 39% digital and then TV, so this is all just now hitting the airwaves, so hopefully, that'll be something that will make make a dent. Go ahead. And then this is the creative you'll see that is around. We're now in a 30% off period right now. Okay, go ahead. And then I wanted to mention the Compass Rose Leadership is a new leadership initiative we have in partnership with Leadership Oklahoma City and Oklahoma City University. We had our first program with a bank, and it went extremely well, really high marks. We see that's something that will continue to grow in the coming years, so. And then we have, we have several surf competitions. We have a one actually this weekend and culminating in an August Pro-Am here, and we have a whole surf team now in Oklahoma City and a big culture that's developed around surfing. Go ahead. And then finally, the Stars and Stripes River Festival. Normally, this is just one weekend, which is this coming weekend, and with has the corporate rowing, our dragon boat leagues and our, you know, fireworks, and we have expanded it to a second weekend. We had a great opportunity to work with Councilman Stone on bringing hydroplane exhibition to the river, which will be exciting to see, and and then we're also going to have the Oklahoma Thunder Dock Diving Event going on, so a whole new dynamic that it will come into play with that July 4th weekend, so it'll really keep some some great energy around the river for two weekends now, so. And that's, that's all I have for my report. I'll take any questions you may have.
You mentioned the Stars and Stripes River Festival and Block Party and the expansion of it to two weekends, and I read an article about it yesterday. And the one thing I was wondering, will it just be on Saturdays only, or will it be Saturday and Sunday? And do you have to buy tickets? And tell us a little bit more.
It's free for anyone to come down, and then you pay if you want to engage in one of the, we considered a whole weekend event because we have all of our adventures and we'll, you know, food and decorations and all of that, but the main events are on Saturdays. So when you see, yeah.
Two Saturdays this time.
Two Saturdays. And then, and I did mention that Friday before, the second weekend, we'll be showing a Most Beautiful Thing on the side of the Finish Line Tower.
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all the items I have. The only other thing we have on here is claims and payroll and no presentations there.
Thank you, City Manager Freeman. That takes us to Item Six, which is our Journal of Council Proceedings. Items A and B under there to receive and approve. Do we take those with one vote, or is that?
Yes.
Okay, we can take those with one vote if we have someone like to motion in second. Now the motion in second, cast your votes. Council approves this item unanimously. This takes us to Item Seven, is our request for uncontested continuances. We have under this, Item 11C, and that's August 2nd, 2022, we're going to be deferring till then. And then Item 11F, and we're going to be deferring that until July 19, 2022, and then Item 11M until December 20, 2022. Is there anything else we need to add to that, sir?
Yes, yes, there are. So on page 16, Item 11D, this is S.P.U.D. 1882, we're going to defer this item to the 5th of July, so for two weeks. And then Item, also on page 16, Item 11E, S.P.U.D. 1386, will defer to, also to this 5th of July. Then if I go to page 17, on unsecured structures, Item 11I1, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 2401 West Park Place, the owner has secured. Item F, 3600 Northwest 16th Street, the owner has secured. Item G, 2701 Northeast 21st Street, the owner has secured. Item H, 1219 Northwest 23rd Street, the owner has secured. And Item N, 633 Southwest 48th Street, the owner has secured. And on page 17, under Item 11J1, this is abandoned buildings, all of these items are stricken from the agenda. Item D, 2401 West Park Place, the owner has secured. Item G, 1219 Northwest 23rd Street, the owner has secured. And Item L, 633 Southwest 48th Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items that I have.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate you walking us through those. I believe this takes us to Item Eight, our revocable permits and events, and that will take us to Item 8A, specifically, a revocable permit with the Asian District Cultural Association for the Asian Night Market Festival, August 20, 2022, Military Park, 1200 Northwest 25th Street. I believe that says Ward Two, so we're just gonna, I think we might have someone here to speak on this item, tell us a little bit more about this event.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jenny Nguyen. I am the Vice President of the Asian District Cultural Association. And what the Asian District Cultural Association is, is a nonprofit organization that bridges and builds community across generations within our district. And how we accomplish this is through education, outreach, beautification, and events. And the most popular event that we have is this one, Asian Night Market Festival, that will be hosted on August 20. It's slated for 5:00 PM till 12:00 AM, and I'm going to leave it open to you guys. If you guys have any questions for me about the event, I'm happy to answer it for you.
This is the Vice Mayor. I can't motion anything. Is that right? Okay. Well, first, I just wanted to say, always nice to see you, Jenny.
Nice to see you as well.
Thank you for your work and your service in our community, especially in Ward Two. I was just reading yesterday about the food scene in Oklahoma City, and I'm here to tell you all, just whether it's Lee's Sandwiches or anyplace fa, like, the Asian District has it, and the Asian Night Market Festival has just been a winning success, and I just really thank you all for stewarding this this festival. So as Vice, if I were the Ward Two Councilperson, I'd move for approval. I cannot as the Vice Mayor, so someone else, anyone else. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
To a safe and successful event. All right, that takes us to Item B, a revocable right-of-way use permit with Oklahoma City Pride Alliance to hold the Pride Alliance Parade, Saturday, June 25th, Walker Avenue between Northwest 6th and Oklahoma City Boulevard. I believe we have some folk here to speak on behalf of this request.
We do. Good morning, Council. Good morning, Vice Mayor. It's a pleasure to call you that, as a Ward Two resident myself. My name is Hannah Royce, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm the former president of the Pride Alliance. I had the pleasure of serving that organization for three years, and this year I have led as festival chair. So I brought to the new leadership with me because I feel like it's important that you all meet them, know their faces, and if you see them this weekend, congratulate them and thank them for all of their hard work. While our revocable today is to get our parade route on Walker approved from you all, I still wanted you all to hear a little bit more about the festivities that will be happening at Scissor Tail Park. So we're back for a year or two in Scissor Tail Park, and it's been, again, a pleasure to work with Drew Watson and the team at the city. They're always a pleasure, and we appreciate them more than I can say. And next, I will introduce Ryan Tomlinson, who is our new president for the Pride Alliance, and Kylan Durant, our Vice President. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Council. My name is Ryan Tomlinson. I am president of the Oklahoma City Pride Alliance. And the Oklahoma City Pride Alliance is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) dedicated to promoting equality for all Oklahomans. And how we do that is through hosting events and partnering with local organizations to provide resources to our community, and specifically, the largest event we have is our Pride Fest coming up this weekend. And we are excited about this event. It is a, a lot of work with myself and these amazing people behind me, and a large group of volunteers and amazing committee members to help pull this off. So we are a full group of volunteers. We don't have any staff on our team. But we are excited about this event because, one, we believe that everyone in Oklahoma should feel welcome here, that they deserve to feel welcome and loved, and so we want to put this event on to show them they do belong here. They do belong in Oklahoma City, they belong in Oklahoma, and that they are truly loved. And, yes. And so some of the events that we have going on throughout the festivities are, we have a long lineup of entertainment that Kylan will talk about in a minute, but specifically on that, we are lucky to partner with the Social Oracle Dining Group to help us pull us together. They have really gone out of their way to help us coordinate a lot of our entertainment and some logistics of the festival, so truly thankful for them, as well as many of our other sponsors that help us make this happen. But one thing that I am proud of for our festival is that we want it to be inclusive of all 2S LGBTQ community members, not just adults and people of bar-going age, but also for families and young people, because the 2S LGBTQ community does include families and children. And so with that, we have specifically launched a new youth committee this year headed up by our youth committee chair, Colin McPherson, who's truly amazing and has led the charge on this new committee. So truly amazing things that he's been working on, including a pride prom for high school-age people who don't feel comfortable going to their prom, and as well as their friends, and to a full lineup of programming at the festival in our youth committee zone sponsored by OGN. And so you can find a lot of information about that on our website, okcpridealliance.org. And additionally, we have a family fun youth zone sponsored by Loves, who has programmed it with a lot of kid-friendly activities, face painting, there's a playground, I think it's a drag, Drag Queen Story Hour, just a bunch of different programming for kids as well. And additionally, we have a new community zone, or it's not new, but we had it last year, and we've expanded it this year. I'll allow, I mean, I'll have Kylan come up and talk about that in a second, but that's truly one of the reasons that we want to have this festival, is not just to have a a party and a celebration, but be able to provide resources through community efforts to our community. So thank you again for listening to us and having us speak on this festival. We appreciate y'all. And now I'd like to introduce our Vice President, Kylan Durant, to come speak on our community zone and entertainment and everything else about our festival. So thank you and happy Pride Month.
Good morning, Kylan Durant, pronounce he/him, and I'm the Vice President of the Oklahoma City Pride Alliance. And just a little bit about me, I'm a little queer black boy from Bartlesville, Oklahoma, and to think 11 years ago when I moved here, I'd be standing here talking about a really awesome festival is just humbling. Anyway, yes, our entertainment this year, I'm proud to say, besides our headliner, of course, that's G Flip, all of it is local talent, which is really awesome. We've got everything from a banjo kind of band that that focuses on some like bluegrass stuff to really wonderful R&B, drag artists. You're going to see just a little bit of everything there, and it's it's been really awesome to work with the Entertainment Committee as Entertainment Chair. They are a wonderful group of people that have really worked hard to make sure that we're an equitable entertainment, so everyone is, you know, getting paid equally, everyone has an opportunity to perform with us, those kinds of things. We also have programmed some wellness opportunities with Cycle Bar. We've got Scott from This Land Yoga coming to to do some yoga. We've got some meditation that's happening. So it's really really awesome to do not just entertainment, but also wellness on the main stage. And then also, our community zone this year has taken a big step forward. We've been able to expand that into the Union Station Lawn, so we've got, you know, the OU Health Science Center coming. We've got a whole day of sessions, from legal sessions, from mental health sessions. We've got a session that's coming to talk to people about voting and what that looks like with, you know, primaries coming up and all of those wonderful things, because we really want to make sure that our community is aware of those things and is getting out to vote. So I'm really excited to see all the things that are happening in the community zone. We've been working with the Diversity Center of Oklahoma to really ramp that up this year and not just only have entertainment and those kinds of things, but also make sure that we're, you know, reaching out to our community resources and including them in our festival. So I'm really excited for this year, and I hope to see some of you there.
May I, may I ask a question? Just just one question. I heard a statistic at the opening pride ceremony, and then I think I'll turn this over to Councilwoman Nice, because this is in Ward Six, your event, and Councilwoman Hammond isn't here today. I don't want to get the statistic wrong, so I don't think I want to quote the number, but you all mentioned the importance of one adult, like literally just one adult, and
Lowering the chances of--
Yes.
--that child's suicidality thoughts or potential. Yeah.
Would you mind sharing, thank you for that support. Would you mind sharing with us like what that statistic is in terms of what it reduces and what Oklahoma is facing when it comes to that? I just think that's important because you mentioned your emphasis this year, particularly on--
Right.
--the work that young people like Colin are doing.
And I think that might have been our beloved Nicole McAfee with that data and statistics as they always come through. They are the Executive Director of Freedom Oklahoma, which is our state's only advocacy organization. And in a state where our 2S LGBTQ community is constantly under attack-- Yes, Rachel?
Hi. Good morning. I'm Rachel Lindhart, Executive Director with the Plaza District. I've stood before you for a few permits, and I serve on the Board of Directors for Pride Alliance. That statistic is that between adolescent LGBTQ youth, the second cause of death is actually suicide. And we see this programming make a deep impact. I recently heard a statistic also that trans men are 50% likely to try to attempt suicide. So, that is the value in this programming. Those statistics, you can look up with the Trevor Project, is where you'll find more statistics like that. Thanks.
And, you know, after watching the special session that happened last September on our youth studies, and the OK policy has put out a Better Tomorrow's, you know, but a lot of that doesn't, we don't have the 2S LGBTQ localized data that we need. We just really know from even stories that we hear, right, about the impact of what this event does. I grew up in Wilberton, Oklahoma, for example, and last year, my mother was pumping gas in Wilberton in her pride shirt. And she felt the presence of a tall man pumping his gas, kind of burly, rough-looking guy with a flatbed truck. And she kind of worried and paused at what he might say because she felt him looking at her shirt. And he came up to her and he said, "I really like your shirt." And she said, "Thank you," you know, kind of not knowing what might come next. And he said, "I have the same one, but it's pink." And she said, "Oh, my gosh, I love that. Did you go to the event?" And he said, "I actually took my 13-year-old daughter to her first pride event in the city, in the big new park last year." And so, it's those types of stories, right, that we get to hear and that we know, especially these rural towns and rural areas where they don't have a 39th Street, they don't have a Plaza District, they don't have the east side, you know, they don't have these events that really make them feel seen and safe and around people like them. So, we are excited to continue building what that looks like, and as well as figuring out ways to grab that localized data based off of, you know, who's attending the festival and how we can expand those, that support to the rural prides. I know McAllister has a pride. I know that Enid has a pride. And, you know, we're really just looking for all the ways that we can ensure that this lasting impact is more than just a conversation during June, and that we are thinking about these youth in our school system and protecting our children at all costs. Because it truly is, suicide is a high thing in Oklahoma, let alone, we don't know, we don't know truly how many of those kids committing suicide are 2S LGBTQ, whether that's lack of a safe household, et cetera.
And just to clarify on the statistic that you referenced, it is from the Trevor Project, and it states that just one affirming adult can reduce suicide risk by up to 40%. Just one. And that's a big percentage.
Again, thank you all for all that you do to ensure that, you know, we can put this on and host this event. I think this year, you know, we had to reschedule the parade last year, and it was not our ideal parade route to begin with because the Festival of the Arts was happening simultaneously. And what we really envisioned was marching past City Hall. And similarly to what some of us had the opportunity to do with you, James, when you were elected, and, you know, the feeling of being in your downtown core and, you know, in, you brought up Harvey Milk this morning, too. I watched that last night. No irony there. But, again, we just, we value the visibility, but safety is the most important thing, which is why our community zone has expanded, and it will continue to expand. And those mental health and physical health resources and access to gender-affirming care are the things that we know are going to actually save lives outside of Pride Month.
Well, I appreciate the context. I appreciate you sharing what the good folk in Wilberton have to say about the good folk in Oklahoma City. I also appreciate the research you shared with us as well. It's just critical, and I really just set all that up to say to everyone on this horseshoe, come to Pride. If one adult has that effect on our children, what happens when they see someone like Councilwoman Nice, who's been to Pride, or myself, or Mayor Holt? Like, you all send a message of survival to our kids when you do that.
Yes.
And they are bombarded daily with people telling them that they're sick, that they're evil, that there's something wrong with them. And just one of you, just your simple presence, that's 40% worth of dropping of that suicide rate. And I just, I would really encourage you all to think about that. You don't have to go give a big Harvey Milk speech, but just your presence, just your presence. And so, thanks for the work you all are doing. And I'll turn this to Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'll just say, thank you for speaking today. And clearly, representation matters. And as a neighbor to Ward Six, I will move for approval.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
All right. That takes us into Ward Seven. Item C, revocable permit with River Sport Foundation for the Stars and Stripes Weekend Two, July 2nd, using Boathouse District, Regatta Park in the eastern basin of the Oklahoma River. Turned over to Councilwoman Nikki Nice.
Thank you. I know, did you have anything to say pertaining to this? Okay.
I had one question. Mike, it references Weekend Two, but there are two weekends. Did Weekend One already get approved?
Yes, it already got approved, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Since we have approved Weekend One, we will approve Weekend Two. And I will move for approval.
Give me a second. Cast your votes for the sequel. Passes unanimously. Thank you for laughing at that, Councilwoman Young. All right. And then, we will recess our city council meeting and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Facilities Authority, which takes us, I think we just do this with one vote? Do you have any, we have a presentation?
We have one presentation, yes.
Thank you, City Manager. We have a presentation on Item B. And this is the Oklahoma City Facilities Authority Budget for Fiscal Year 2223. And let's hear our presentation.
Lori Hurd is one of our Budget Specialists in Budget Office, and she's going to present the MFA Budget.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, and City Staff. I am Lori Hurd from the Budget Office. So, what we're bringing before you today is the FY23 Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority Budget. So, the OCMA, OCMF A is a trust of the city that allows us to enter into multi-year contracts and then provides, allowing us to maintain adequate reserves for items such as workers' compensation claims. At the last council meeting, you all approved the city budget. So, with the OCMF A budget that is being presented here today, the primary source of revenue is from city funds that, for specific purposes, that we'll review here briefly. So, overall-- The OCMF A budget is just over $120 million. You can see the various purposes within the OCMF A, that health insurance is by far the biggest portion at $75 million. This comes from both city and employees as they contribute to premiums paid for health insurance. There are also several similar functions to health insurance within the OCMF A. Our property and liability insurance is about $8.3 million this year, and workers' compensation is projected to be at about $11.9 million. We also pay for unemployment claims throughout the trust, but those are relatively small, at about $225,000. The second-largest category is information technology. This is one of the areas that really utilizes that ability to enter into multi-year contracts with vendors for items such as computer systems, the radio systems, E911, and other IT-related services. We also use the OCMF A for advanced capital funding for geo-bonds. We've established a revolving fund in the MFA that allows public works to begin the design work on geo-bond projects before the bonds are actually sold for the project. Once the bonds are sold, the bond funds purchase the plans from the MFA, and we can start the work on the project much more quickly. The repayment from the geo-bonds replenishes the advanced capital funding account, and then additional projects are initiated within the trust. The general purpose and other category includes items such as annual financial audits, professional legal services, and code enforcement-related contracts. When we look at revenue within the OCMF A, health insurance contributions from the city and employees is the biggest source at 61%. Transfers from city funds, such as the IT Internal Service Fund, is the second-largest source at almost 25%. Fund balance is the next-largest at 8%. And then, there are several miscellaneous revenue sources that account for just under 6% of total revenue. On the expense side, payments for services dominate at 92%, which makes sense considering that things such as insurance premiums and IT contracts all fit within this other services and charges category. One thing to note is that there are no employees in the OCMF A, which is why you don't see any personnel-related expenses within the trust. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions or comments from City Manager or Council?
No, I tell you, I say no. Yes. The only thing I would say with this is basically, this is one we bring before the council. Typically, when you see trust budgets come back through, it's just to receive the trust budgets. And that's because the individual boards have already approved those. With MFA in the today, in a minute here, we'll do PPA as well. Because you are the board of the trust, we wanted to make sure that you had just an understanding of what's included in that budget. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I believe that does that. So, I think we are looking for someone to motion to approve. And then, a second, please. Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. So, we will now adjourn-- Oh, wait, I got, I jumped ahead. We're gonna adjourn the Municipal Facilities Authority and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. And we actually have a presentation here, as well as City Manager, Freeman just mentioned.
So, Item D is the budget for the PPA for Fiscal Year 2223. And Ian Hutchinson, another one of our Management and Budget Specialists, is gonna make the presentation.
All right. Good morning, Vice Mayor and City Council. Ian Hutchinson, Office of Management and Budget, here to present the Fiscal Year 23 Public Property or OCPPA Authority Budget. So, the OCPPA is similar to the MFA, a trust of the city, and it exists for primarily two reasons. So, number one, as a mechanism to allow multi-year contracts with vendors. And number two, as a dedicated funding source for items such as improvements at the fairgrounds, improvements to sports facilities, and also the golf course operations are all in the PPA. So, first, we'll take a look at the budget summary by function. You can see at the bottom of the slide there, the FY23 budget is just under $68 million. And so, the largest function by far, or by a few percentage points, are MAPS Contracts and Capital, which makes up about 36% of the budget. And so, one of the primary items in there is the contracts with ASM, who manages the operations at the Oklahoma City Convention Center, Prairie Surf Studios, and the Paycom Center. And then, the second-largest category, at just 130%, are the fairgrounds. And included in that function are debt payments on bonds that fund improvements at the fairgrounds that are supported by hotel tax, and then also the transfer of the hotel tax that is surplus to debt requirements back to the hotel tax fund. And then, I'll just touch on the third-largest category, which are the golf courses. And so, the golf professionals at each of the major golf courses approve the budget for the overall golf system. And they did, or they developed the budget, and they did recommend it for approval at the last Golf Commission meeting on June 1st. So, next, we'll take a look at the revenue by category. And so, the biggest revenue source for the PPA are transfers from the General Fund. That makes about 30% of the revenue. And that would include the costs to fund that contract with ASM for the management of those three downtown facilities. And it's also worth mentioning that water costs for the golf system are also paid from the General Fund. And then, going back to revenue, the second-largest would be transfers from hotel tax. So, as I mentioned, the hotel tax fund transfers all the hotel tax collections to the PPA to pay the debt on the bonds that fund fairgrounds improvements. And then, that is sent back to the hotel tax after the debt is paid. So, that makes up that third category. And then, I'll just skip to golf course revenue, which makes up about 17% or $11.5 million. And so, included in there are just all the miscellaneous revenue sources at the golf courses, such as green fees, cart and locker rentals, and things like that. And then, finally, we'll just take a look at expenses by category. And so, similar to the MFA, but not quite as large, other services and charges make up about 46% of the budget, or $31 million. And so, that would include the contract with ASM. It would also include all the natural gas costs for major city facilities. Those are paid out of a master contract in the PPA. And then, I'll sort of skip to highlight debt service next, which is that purple pie slice there at just under 10%. So, that's the debt service at the fairgrounds. And then, finally, just below that is personal services. And so, unlike the MFA, there are salaries and benefits that are paid from the PPA because all of the golf course staff are employees of the PPA. And so, that's what's represented there. And with that, happy to take any questions on the PPA budget. Thank you.
Councilor, City Manager, any comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much. And then, I believe we take a vote to deal with all of those items. So, if we have a motion in a second? We do, in fact, have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will then adjourn the OCPPA, reconvene as City Council, which takes us to Item Nine, our Consent Docket. We do have some presentations, and I'll name those, and then I'll turn to council members to see who, if anyone, has any item they'd like to note for specific comment or to pull for an individual vote. So, we have a presentation on Item Nine, BH. This is on page nine of your agenda, printed agenda. And then, we also have, that was BH. And then, we'll have a presentation as well on Items BJ, BK, and BL. That's still on page nine. And then, we'll have a presentation on page 12, if you look at Item CT. And those are what we have. Is there a council member who would like to draw our attention to another item?
Yes, I would like to have some additional information on Item CS.
CS on page 12?
I'm not sure what page, but yeah, CS.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Greenwell, that's CS. Do we have any other items from Council? Do we have any other items from council? Okay, then we will take these in order, and we will begin then with item BH. Is that about right, city manager?
Yes. Lindsey Cates, the Planning Department is here to speak to this. This is an item that we've talked a little bit about in the past, and it's an RFP, and I'll let her talk us through that for a civilian homeless outreach team.
Good morning, council. Good morning, Vice Mayor Cooper. I'm Lindsey Cates. As you see her pronouns, I'm with the Planning Department and Homelessness Services, and we are putting out a request for proposals that will allow solicitations from organizations to provide homeless street outreach. It's supporting a pilot program for an initial period of two years with the option to modify and extend services as needed. This homeless street outreach program will coordinate with the city's Public Safety Department to provide a non-police response to low-risk calls for assistance. So one of the things that's really important about this, as we looked at the Mayor's Task Force of 2019, and then as well with the Police Task Force recommendations, is that we want to utilize the de-escalation by professional mental health and social workers versus a police response in this outreach. We are looking to have up to two mobile response teams. With this request for proposal, there is ability for the organizations to promote the structure the way that they want to do it, but we are requesting that they have at least one licensed mental health professional on each of these teams. We also have recommended that there would be a peer recovery support specialist, so someone that has had prior experience and then expertise living with mental health or addiction issues or experiencing homelessness themselves. And then they have worked to recover from those things, as well as then get certification and training so that then they can help others. So we're recommending that would be a part of the team as well. One of the other caveats that is really important in this is that they would provide... whatever agency is selected would have to provide evidence-based, trauma-informed training. So that's really imperative into the training that we want to have that goes into this pilot. Also, it will be a multidisciplinary team, meaning that it will coordinate with our homeless response officers, as well as homeless services, as well as other agencies around the city. So it's truly a collaborative effort to help coordination. We currently have about three to five agencies that do outreach, but many of them don't have a full-time team or a full-time staff. And so this really is one of those initiatives that we are hoping that will be implemented, not only through the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness, but also in line with the Police Outreach Response Team that we've talked with. Are there any questions?
Yeah, and I would just reiterate what she just said. I think this is one where there was this overlap between the Homelessness Task Force and the Law Enforcement Task Force and the Community Policing Working Group. There was an overlap here, and so it was really a good way to intersect these and give us an opportunity to have... to check this out and see how this would work. I think it's also going to overlap with the mental health services that we've talked about and mental health response. So I think there's a lot that we're going to learn from this as we're moving forward, and I really appreciate Lindsey's leadership and their team with helping to pull this together, and just interested to see how the various service providers reach out and what they're willing to bring and resources that they can offer as well. So I think it's really a great opportunity for this. This will work with the homelessness outreach team, so it's a partnership, but allows us to be able to send a civilian-only response in cases where we can do it safely. And so I really appreciate her leadership with this, and then looking forward to what we get back on the responses and bringing that back to you all.
So when the proposal goes out, does it identify the duration of the program, the length of time, and does it identify estimated cost or expected cost?
So we didn't identify expected cost. We want to see what they will propose on that. It does identify, and I'll let Lindsey take the rest of the question because she knows the details of this.
Sure, yeah. It does identify the timeline. And then there's also, along with it, data that they will need to report into our homelessness management information system, as well as evaluations that we're going to do at a six-month interval and then yearly interval to then with the option to renew as well. So it is something that we really are looking at evaluating. We just think it's really important with a new program.
And in that together, we'll identify with those things that they'll report on, like what the metrics will be, the performance standards or measures that we'll be working to achieve with these. So it'll be a part of that, working together and bringing this together from their proposal, whoever's selecting the proposal, and what we end up with a contract. Because the next thing you would see, coming back to the council, would be a contract recommending particular service provider.
Yeah, I guess the thing I'm unclear on is this a six-month contract? Is it an annual contract? Will you come back to the city council?
The plan is to do a two-year program, and the thinking on that is for them to stand that up, to staff it, to be prepared to move forward. We wanted to be able to have a longer-term commitment, so I think we'll have it as a one-year with an extension. So it'll be set up to be two years initially.
And the extension would come back before the city council to approve?
That's right, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
No, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, a comment. And if you'd like to respond, that's fine. But you mentioned in your presentation, this would be an alternative to the police response to a citizen's call about some type of issue that they're experiencing with homeless, and that we would hope that this group would de-escalate any confrontation. My comment that I'm passing along to you and to the city is that I don't see how it can get much less de-escalated, because the response I'm hearing from business owners and others is that there's no response. The police may show up at some point, you know, and the timing varies, sometimes within an hour, sometimes within four hours. And their interaction is just to ask the people to leave, and that's it. So I don't know how less confrontational we are. And this is the result of property damage, whether it's to vehicles, to the building, or just, I'm going to use the term harassment of customers. And so if you want to respond to that, I'd love to hear that, but then I've got other questions.
Yeah, one of the things I would say is, you know, in the past, the police will respond as they can, depending on the severity of the call. It's just like any other call, that sometimes it's longer if it's not like there's an immediate danger that's there. So sometimes it can take longer, depending on how many officers we have available. The homeless outreach team itself, right now, is two officers. So six hundred and twenty square miles, two officers. So this really is an enhancement, to try to enhance that. My hope would be, I know there's many calls that we get on issues with people who are in homelessness, but it really is to try to respond to the calls, but also where we can to be proactive, so that we can actually be out there in the camps, because the goal ultimately will be, if it's something where someone's creating a threat, breaking a law, where we have to, we will bring the police into it. But where we can, the goal is to try to connect them into services. And so that's what we'll try to do. It takes a lot of effort. It doesn't happen just the first time. It takes a lot of effort. This will let us enhance those services and see what we can accomplish.
Okay. Well, not to prolong this hearing, because I've got specific examples I'd be happy to share with you in terms of situations. In fact, it was just reported last week on the local news station of an individual being stabbed on Southwest 59th Street by a group of individuals that were described as homeless individuals. I've got specific examples of individuals from business owners, say, like in a convenience store, where one of their customers was attacked with a metal object by a homeless person, in that business owner's words. I mean, who knows? And again, the response from the police was very delayed, in terms of well over an hour. And so this is a physical assault, where the person ended up in the hospital with stitches on their forehead. Another example, same facility, a homeless person gets a trash can, places it next to one of the gasoline pumps, sets it on fire, and the response is, again, very delayed. No action taken. That's the concern of business people. So the point I'm trying to make is, how can we further de-escalate things when business people are telling me there's no action being taken? Now, let's move on. So as you mentioned in terms of the metrics, we're going to let the respondents provide us with their metrics as to what we can expect from this?
I think in the RFP, we've set some expectations in there. What I was saying is that we will work with them as we're working through this to develop those metrics and make sure that what we're identifying are measurable items that we can actually report and collect data on.
Okay. So here's what I would like to see in terms of metrics, that because of the interaction by this team, we saw a number, some number, of individuals who, at the time of the interaction, who were considered homeless, have been counseled and are now in various stages of housing, temporary, midterm, long-term. These are the... I mean, the business community is asking for solutions. I think we're tired of just talking. We'd like to see some verifiable results, and so that's what I'm asking, that we see things like as a result of these interactions. Or that due to this interaction, they've learned that hitting people on the head with a metal object is not appropriate behavior, and they quit doing that. Setting trash cans and moving them next to an active gasoline pump is not acceptable behavior, and they quit doing that. Breaking into vehicles is not acceptable behavior, and they stopped doing that. I'd like to see metrics that show a decrease in criminal activity associated with the homeless individuals, as well as an increase in those individuals being placed into some form of housing, some form of job training, to where they're no longer creating problems. Is that too much to ask?
It's not. I think it's unrealistic to think that one time that we go and speak to someone is going to end up solving the problem, put them into housing. So I think it's collecting the data and collecting information. I don't know, I've heard the data, and I don't know, Lindsey probably knows better than I do here, but the number of times you have to make contact with someone who's particularly in chronic homelessness, that the number of times you have to contact before you get them plugged into services. So it's just continuing that effort to help address these issues and get them plugged into services. So I don't think it's too much to ask that we measure that. It's just kind of the expectation would be, it's not just the first time you contact an individual that that's going to result in now they're going to get services and they're going to get into housing. So I think it's just an expectation of it's something that we can measure and report on. It's just there's not always going to be an immediate response just from a single contact.
Well, my goal is just to relay the frustration from the business community that is being directed towards me, and I'm sure other members of the council get some of this feedback, and to encourage, you know, positive tangible results from this effort. There's no need to just spend money for the sake of spending money. And again, I don't know how we can de-escalate any further than apparently the actions that are currently occurring.
Ultimately, dealing with homelessness is going to be... it's not just the city, it's the city, it's the community as a whole, it's nonprofit community, it's everyone pulling together to deal with this. And we're going to have to take different approaches. There's different programs, different ways that we can do this. This is one of those efforts that we're making to try to help address this.
Sure. And I would just like to add, there are twenty-four strategies that we're working through on the Homelessness Task Force, and in conjunction with this, this is one way, but we are working to increase our landlord engagement teams within other agencies so that we can find housing more quickly. Also with this, we're working better with two or three different hospitals and their crisis centers, and that collaboration hasn't happened in the past, so that when somebody does say, you know, a licensed professional says they need to go and get some more mental health than they have on the street than a police officer can provide, we are working more collaboratively with those hospitals. So some of those things are happening in conjunction. I'm excited to be back here at the end of the summer, where I'll be able to share some of the other strategies that we're implementing. One of the pieces, just for example, is with the Better Way Program with Mental Health Association Oklahoma that started in September. We're going to share annual data, but right now, we have five hundred and ninety-five people that have ridden the van that were experiencing homelessness or that were panhandling. And of those, one hundred and seventy-eight received case management services. We have about twenty that have currently been employed, and we're working through... and the employment specialist just began in February, so we only have a few months of data on that. So I do hear the frustration from the business owners. I understand we're trying to take a multifaceted approach, because it's not just going to be one pilot, but we think this is going to be one tool, along with other tools that we're working on.
One other thing I think... Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one additional comment, because I believe this is part of the frustration that I'm hearing, that the city may not be taken, may not recognize the seriousness of the issue in terms of the people who are... I'm going to use the word victims, or however you want to describe them, in their encountering with the homeless. So the quicker we can start demonstrating activities and the results of those activities, and not give the impression that we're going to continue to allow, for example, one particular person to have multiple chances, upwards to a dozen, of stop committing criminal activities. I mean, I think that's what the business community is looking for. I mean, we all want to be nice to people and kind, but in some instances, that's not the solution that's going to correct the problem. Thank you.
I think one thing that's important is that the business community and the entire city are looking for us to come up with results and look at new ways. And I've worked a lot with Chief Gorley, and if you look at the Crisis Intervention Team Program through the police, which deals with mental health, which is a big portion of the homeless population. In 2021, we had twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-four mental health-related calls. Of the total mental health-related calls, only eight thousand five hundred and forty resulted in an individual either taken into custody by the OCPD or transferred to the hospital. Only two-point-five percent of all mental health calls resulted in a transport to a detention facility or an inebriate alternative. My point is, we are trying to look at different ways to deal with this, and it is taking more time than any of us wanted, but this is something we have got to stake on top of, all the council members, staff, and keep pushing hard. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to reiterate a little bit on Councilman Greenwell's comments there, which is, it's like I think the rest of us, we're sensing a lot of frustration on this from individuals and business owners that are seeing their businesses impacted, which of course impacts the people that work at that business, trying to make a living as well. And, you know, Craig, you brought up, you know, that it takes so many times of making contact before we can... before they might decide if they want any help or not. And I think one thing we need to look at is how can we help them make that decision? And how can we make... how can we help them make that decision more quickly and efficiently? So just my thoughts on it. Appreciate your work on it.
Just one more thing. So as a dispatcher for the Oklahoma City Police Department for several years, one of the things I'm very concerned about what we're proposing here is that you're putting a lot of responsibility on a dispatcher to make a safety call to, if I'm understanding what you're proposing to do correctly, a safety call to dispatch civilians to a potentially dangerous situation. We received a lot of calls on homelessness. This is such a complex problem, we all know, and we need to connect these folks with the mental health services and housing services that are possible. But I don't know if I'll be able to support something that dispatches civilians to a situation where a trained officer hasn't evaluated it for safety first. We've seen an increase in assaults on officers and on nonprofit volunteers going out to serve the homeless community as we stand today. And now we're proposing as a city to put civilians out there for that specific purpose. So I'm going to be looking to see how do we protect the individuals who provide these RFPs in those situations. these RFPs in those situations that we're asking them to go out into. So I hope that we'll come back with some, some solutions for that part of this problem.
I think one thing that would be helpful for all of us is to take a look at the RFP and be able to study it some more.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, I have some comments, actually. I almost sent this as a text to everyone who serves on council with me, but now we're on the horse juice, I'll just share it aloud. Oh, no. There is a New York Times article, some of you might have already come across it. Councilwoman, I shared it with me, but it's gone quite viral. Here's the title, Google it. I can tell you, when I do my July 26th Ward Two meetup, I'm tempted to like print hundreds of copies of this, because what Houston, Texas went through, and already Lindsey knows where this is heading, what Houston, Texas, our neighbors to the south, went through with homelessness, so too are we. And had I not served on our mayor's homelessness task force, I wouldn't have understood the full picture. I wouldn't have understood, as Lindsey just pointed out, the service providers not talking to each other, not rowing together, having different philosophies. And Houston experienced this. So yesterday, I've been meaning to read it since Nikki sent it to me several days ago, but yesterday, in the middle of the day, it was time for my bike ride, and I'm a masochist, so I was in the sun. But the article, you don't have to read, you can actually listen to it. There's a, there's a thing on there for listening. And so for 40 minutes, I biked from Paseo to Scissor Tell, and you see homeless folk, and you see these businesses that you all are concerned about, you see the homeless folk who are in front of those places. Hearing this article as the backdrop, as you're experiencing that, it will explain everything to you. It will literally explain everything. The title of the article is called, "How Houston Moved 25,000 People." How Houston Moved 25,000 People From the Streets Into Homes of Their Own. The subtitle is, "The Nation's Fourth-Largest City Hasn't Solved Homelessness, But Its Remarkable Progress Can Suggest a Way Forward." And I just, just a couple excerpts, because I hear the frustrations, especially as a council member of Ward Two, as we've seen kind of an increase. But here's what I want to say, and I have just a few excerpts from this. During the last decade, Houston, the nation's fourth-most populous city, has moved more than 25,000 homeless people directly into apartments and houses. The overwhelming majority of them have remained housed after two years. The number of people deemed homeless in the Houston region has been cut by 63%. I want to say that one more time, because y'all love metrics up here. Y'all real like to talk about metrics, I'm giving you some metrics. The number of people deemed homeless in the Houston region has been cut by 63% since 2011. And that's according to the latest numbers from local officials. More. Even judging by more modest metrics registered in the 2020 federal report, Houston did more than twice as well as the rest of the country at reducing homelessness over the previous decade. 10 years ago, homeless veterans, which was one of the categories that federal government tracks, they used to, your homeless veterans, people who served that flag, as so too did some of the council members here, like Councilman Stone. But 10 years ago, homeless veterans, which is a category that the federal government tracked, they used to wait 720 days, 720 days, and had to navigate 76 bureaucratic steps to get from the street into permanent housing, with the support from the social service counselors. And today, what Houston has accomplished, 32 days waiting. They went from 720 days for people who have served this country to 32 days. That's important. How did they do it? Houston has gotten this far by teaming with county agencies and persuading scores of local service providers, corporations, and charitable nonprofits. Organizations have often bicker and compete with each other, which is what we learned on the homelessness task force, happens right here in this city. That's part of why we are in the mess we are in. People were operating in silos, they were not talking to each other. We were Houston. But they finally got them to row in unison, and together they've gone all in on this thing y'all remember from MAPS 4 called Housing First, a practice supported by decades of research that moves the most vulnerable people straight from the streets into apartments, not shelters, and without first requiring them to wean themselves off drugs, or complete a 12-step program, or find God, or a job. There are addiction recovery and religious conversion programs that do in fact succeed in getting people off the street, but Housing First involves a different logic. When you're drowning, it doesn't help if your rescuer insists you learn to swim before returning you to shore. You can address your own issues once you're on land. Or not. Either way, you join the wider population of people battling demons behind closed doors. And then the final couple things here, since we were speaking at length on this earlier. Same article. A half a century ago, America invented modern homelessness. The stage was set with the shuttering of psychiatric hospitals in the wake of abuse scandals, and the introduction of new psychotropic medications. Then cities started offering tax incentives to owners of flop houses or single-room occupancy hotels to convert their properties into market-rate rentals, condos, and co-ops. In New York City alone, more than 100,000 SRO units that had housed substance abusers, elderly singles, former inmates, and the mentally ill were lost. Moreover, during the 1980s, the year I was born, back-to-back recessions, combined with the Reagan administration's severe federal cutbacks targeting low-income housing and poverty assistance programs, forced more and more Americans, including large numbers of families, into homelessness. At the same time, well-paid manufacturing jobs moved overseas, and steelworkers had to start pushing brooms at McDonald's. An oil crisis drove up fuel prices, which bumped up rent, as did a new generation of gentrifiers discovering the architectural pleasures of historic neighborhoods. And on top of all of that, Reagan-era tax reforms encouraged the construction of high-end single-family homes but not of affordable multifamily rentals. There were 1,500 multifamily homes built in America in 1985, but just 140,000 built in 1991. As people began competing for fewer and fewer apartments, the affordable housing market turned into a game of musical chairs played by low-income Americans. Someone always lost, end quote. I really hope that the concerns that some of my fellow council members just addressed, I hope you read this article, because the whole time I was listening to it on my bike ride yesterday, and I'm taking these mental notes, the one thought I had, the one single thought I had, is we better do what Houston, Texas did. If you want these calls to stop to your city council offices, what Lindsey has just put in front of us is what Houston did. That's what happened. And this talk of the business sector, by the way, you business leaders all across the city, hear me when I say this, talk to Lindsey, talk to Jeff Butler, talk to the homeless service providers. Skip Councilman Greenwell, skip me. Stop talking to the politicians, go to the people doing this work. Go to them and learn from them. We cannot make the same mistakes Seattle did. I hear a lot of talk in this city, talking about, we can't become Seattle, we can't become Portland, we can't become San Francisco. Well, quickly, let me tell you what happened in Seattle. They tried to get a tax on their businesses to help be able to provide for these sort of services that this consent docket item is going to do. Led by Amazon, Seattle's corporation, community fought back, ended the tax, and that's why they're in the mess that they're in right now. So we have a choice, city of OKC, and I think we're heading in the right choice with just this one item on the consent docket. We can do what Houston did, and even do it better, or we can keep doing what we've been doing and keep going in this same direction. I'm voting for this, and I'm voting for it a million percent. I think this is one of the best things the city has ever done, and it's the best thing it's done in my lifetime. And then finally, Councilwoman, I share your concern, I do, about putting our people in harm's way, which is why I would also invite you, if you have not yet, and I know from your dispatch work, you probably already have, and I remember I followed your campaign, and I saw you talked about homelessness, and I know that you have a Love for Homeless Alliance. It would, it might be worth revisiting with them and having these conversations about what the safety looks like, because they're, I have friends who are on the board of SISU, who work with SISU, they're on a pivot, on a daily basis, they'll tell me about someone acting out, they feel threatened, but they get the training, and that's what keeps them safe. So that, but again, I understand, I think you're coming from a good place on that, so I don't mean to like cast aspersions or anything, but I can just tell you from my own experience of talking to those service providers, that's how I've come to feel more comfortable with it. But, fair enough. But the metrics, again, the New York Times article, I've never read something that had so summarized perfectly what I learned serving on the homelessness task force that the mayor set up. So, thank you for listening to that.
So Craig, when will the RFP go out, and can we look at it, people like Barbara and I look at it before it goes out?
So this is approving the RFP to go out, so the item that's in the packet is the RFP that will go out. You're welcome to look at it. I mean, it would actually be released today, right?
Tomorrow, yes.
Tomorrow.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more thing. I'm sorry, I can't let it go, because it's important. This is not a knock on law enforcement when I say this. There, we have asked law enforcement and teachers to play the middle person between them and the person experiencing homelessness. I say this as a former middle school teacher, and as a current college professor, who literally just last semester had a student come up to me, pull me aside, nervous, intimidated, embarrassed, because they were no longer housing secure. And I got to turn to them and say, hey, guess what? No shame, let me tell you about SISU youth right down the street from us, we were at OCU, right down the street, let me tell you about it. They had never heard of this service before, that poor baby. Our homeless community, people who have experienced homelessness, have often lost the trust of their family members and friends, particularly if substance abuse and addiction were part of that conversation. The police terrify them simply by their presence, and it could be the nicest, best person, like Felix Valdez. Great guy, great guy. But the very presence of law enforcement scares them, scares them. And so that's why it can take up to 50 times for a service provider to re-establish and build that trust. You're asking someone to have trust when they no longer maybe trust parents or guardians, grandparents, loved ones. You're asking them to take a chance on someone they've never met in their entire life, and only the person who has that training is more likely to accomplish that. So this is not an anti-police conversation, this is how do we get the job done conversation. And I just think that is so critical. This is not about anti-business or anti-police, this is literally how do we treat human beings as human beings and undo the last 40 years of awfulness that have faced our people? And that's just it. But the only way we're going to do it is if we have these street outreach team workers going out there to connect these folk to housing. And I look forward to later this summer, hearing about that Housing First implementation we're working on. So, thank you so much for the work you're doing, and thank you, council, for hearing me on that. And again, New York Times, "How Houston Moved 25,000 People Into Homes."
One thing, Craig, I'd say, and it may just be my fault, and I may have missed it, but when I went through the agenda last night, if we are at item number 11BH, I don't have a resolution with it, and maybe I just missed it, or an RFP, and it's something I think most of us would like to look at.
We will make sure, so it's, it's in the full packet, it just doesn't go out, and what's, what's sent out, right?
It wasn't what was hand-delivered to my office on Friday afternoon.
Right, that's right. That's just the memos, that just has the memos. The actual resolution or the RFP is actually in the packets that we can look at online.
Yeah, I just ask, before it's mailed out, we have a chance to read it and comment to you about what we think of it, and in many, and maybe some deficiencies and additional information that needs to be placed within the RFP, please.
And while we're on that subject, and that has been a concern, most recently in the past months, as far as resolutions not appearing, all we get is this one sheet, and that's not enough.
We don't, I'm sorry.
Because we have to go and do our own research and dig and dive for all of these things, and we only barely get one business day to do that. So that's, that's not an advantage for us as council members to make a precise decision on some of these things that we have been able to see and not actually get information for unless we're just sitting up here trying to find it. And again, not to say we can't look for it, but again, it's not helping us to serve the people if we don't have all of that information.
We'll work with the council on that. We haven't printed those, because like often, we'll have a contract or something, it would be thousands of pages that we'd be printing, and most of that we wouldn't need. So that's why what we've done in the past, and we've done this for decades, that we send the packet out with the, it'll have the memos that are in there, and then what we do is have all of that available online, that you can go out and look at, and once it's posted online, anyone can go out and look at that and see the items, but we'll work with the council on making sure that's available and it's clear.
I think I'd feel more comfortable with 9BH.
We can get you a copy of it.
Passing it for two weeks and give us a chance to read, everyone to read the RFP. I'd like to make a motion to do that.
I would just say to every, I, I hear that, I think time is of the essence, I think we need to pass this now. We should have done it two years ago, but we had to do the research, we should have done it 40 years ago. And I, one more thing that I heard Councilman Greenwell say that I forgot to address, they mentioned it in the New York Times article, Aneise Parker, who was the mayor who implemented the approach that dropped their homelessness rate by the percentage I said earlier, quote, "The homeless guy on your doorstep who spits on you when you leave your house and is always spouting from revelations may seem like the least sympathetic person in the world, so you may not like the idea of paying to house him, but you can't complain about him being on the street and also complain about him getting off of it." We have to do something. We have to do something right now, right now. If our people are frustrated and scared, this is how we make them less frustrated and unscared, and this is how we house people at the same time, and we get these people going. Mark, I hear you, buddy, I'm just saying, like, let's move forward on it.
So one thing we could do is, if we're able to move forward with it, we'll have to be able to move forward with it, we can make sure that any comments we get back, that we try to pull those together collectively and make sure we're trying to address the concerns within the contracts.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
No, we don't, because this is on the consent document.
No.
So they pull it out.
Mark had made a motion to pull this separately.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I'll, I'll support that. James, I agree, this, something should have been done many years ago. I'm not opposed to this, I'm just sharing current frustrations of the business owners, because they have a responsibility for both their employees' and their customers' safety while they're on their premises, and they don't believe they can guarantee either their employees' or customers' safety in many situations. All Mark is asking to be done on this is to allow us to look at it, provide input before it goes out into the community. If we could get one-tenth of the benefits that you explained in that article, that'd be great. If we could match it, that would be tremendous. I think that's what people are wanting, a solution. And all Mark's asking for is, let us have the opportunity to review this document, to ensure that it has the provisions that we would like to see responded to. I don't see how two weeks' delay will impact any of this.
And the one thing I'd say, James, as far as Barbara's comments are concerned, we have a dispatcher that has to make a decision on how to send, to deal with this call. And we know through the Crisis Intervention Program that the police is currently operating and has expanded, and it has wonderful results. I mean, they had 21,000 calls last year. And so I kind of want to understand, like Barbara I think does, how that decision's going to be made, and what the RFP, how it addresses that. And I'm, I'm just as much as you, want to get something done quickly on this. I just want to be informed of my decision, please.
I can't stop yet, my only, and thank you, David, for walking me through your My only, and thank you, David, for walking me through your, like, knowing that you were listening to what I was saying is very helpful.
And I think everybody in the city, nobody's against trying anything. They just want solutions.
I think the reason why I get so passionate about it, and why I get worried about delays, and again, I know we're heading in that direction, but the reason why I get so passionate is my worry is, I don't want us to lose sight of how they did what they did. And I don't want us to start tinkering with the requests from the community who's doing this work and start pushing us backwards into the old ways of doing things, because that's what we're comfortable and familiar with. That's my only concern.
Yeah, and the one thing I'd say is that I've had several meetings with staff recently, taking a look at the ordinances in San Diego, which has had great results. And, and I'm not trying to delay this, I'm trying to make sure we make the best solution. And I hope you will take the time to read the materials that, that I've obtained from San Diego.
Oh, bring it on. And related, I'm glad you said that, because it was going to be my request of you all. This New York Times article, I would love to, I really want to talk with Lindsay and planning about it, but look through it, y'all. It's everything we're going through. It is everything we're going through. So, all right, thank you.
There's still a motion on the, yeah?
A motion, we have a motion to defer on the board, and I believe we have a second.
And now, cast your votes. Pass is four to two. And then that takes us back into consent.
Terrified, terrified, two weeks.
Two-week referral?
Two weeks.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, City Manager. Thanks for the conversation, everyone. And again, thank you, Lindsay, for your work there. We have a presentation then on item BJ, BK, and BL, which takes us to Director Eric Winger with Public Works.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. All three of the items that we're getting ready to go through are Better Streets, Safer City sales tax items. I'll go through these one at a time. The first one, again, Eric Winger, Public Works Director, Oklahoma City. First item that we have is an excess collection distribution recommendation that's coming to you today from the Better Streets Advisory Board. They just looked at this at their meeting in June. And so, I'm going to kind of go over this in summary. As you look at this spreadsheet in front of you, the projects have gone extremely well under the Better Streets Sales Tax Program. We're on track for getting all of those projects into construction by the end of this calendar year, or the very first part of 2023. When you look at the approved allocation totals, these are the previous authorizations that have been granted by the City Council in each of the project categories. When you look at street resurfacing, street enhancement, sidewalk trails, and bike projects, you'll see that $258 million has been allocated to date. You've also received sales tax reports over the past several months and year, showing that we've had good sales tax collections in Oklahoma City. And that can be evidenced by the revenue that you see at the bottom. We've exceeded the estimation of the sales tax by $5,676,528. So what, the action that we're going to be asking that the council take is receive the recommendation from the Better Streets Advisory Board. I'm going to show you just one more slide here, not just yet, but I'm going to show you how they would like to allocate that excess collection towards those sales tax projects. Now, to give a little bit of bearing, I'm going to show you the second column, the available for project assignment. We've also done extremely well on the construction side. We're bringing projects in under budget. This is the amount per category that is yet to have projects assigned for those totals. The board is getting ready to make that recommendation also to the City Council at their next meeting. But you can see that there is money in each of the project categories that's going to be able to fund additional street resurfacing projects, additional enhancements to street enhancements, additional sidewalks, trails, and some additional on bikes. So, the numbers that we're getting ready to recommend are going to add to those totals. So there are, there are amounts in each of those that are ready today, and we're going to increase those. So on this next slide, this is the recommendation for that $5.6 million. It came through significant discussion. What I would tell you, generally, the conversation of the advisory board has been that the resurfacing projects has been fully funded since day one. We've had the assistance of bond program resurfacing also to help make sure that we're making better streets throughout Oklahoma City. We look at the street enhancement projects, we have found that we've run into a shortfall on some of the more complicated projects. We were very successful on a association of central Oklahoma government's grant, an ACOG grant, to put additional monies towards Northwest 23rd Street, which is a street enhancement project that is bond-funded. We're making a recommendation today that $2.6 million going to the street enhancement projects likely to help us fund the Northeast 23rd Street project that was not as successful with the grant. Looking at trails, we continue to struggle somewhat on the Deep Fork Trail Project. It is one that is also funded partially with grants, partially with bond, partially with sales tax. And then the last item that you'll see on this recommendation is $1 million. This is no different than the MAPS program, but we do receive sales tax adjustments each month, even though that we have fully collected the totals. It's not uncommon for the tax commission to make a correction going forward. Sometimes those are positive corrections, and sometimes those are negative corrections. But this is a fund that we wish to set aside, just under good management and how we've managed in the past, just to make sure that we can pay those differences in the future. Now, if we do find that those monies aren't necessary going forward, we're also going to recommend that they just go towards an operating and maintenance reserve for some of the street enhancement projects that were funded as a part of the Better Streets Sales Tax Program. So what you see today are the numbers that are recommended by the advisory board. If approved by the council today, we will add those to the totals that I showed you on the previous slide. The advisory board is going to meet again in July, and they're going to actually make those project recommendations on this excess collection, which projects they would actually like to see those go towards. And we're going to be bringing that item back to the City Council for action. So today, you're actually just putting it into the right project category. The board will then have what the totals are for each project category and bring recommendations back next month.
Eric, could you go back to the previous slide? I'm not sure I understand. So, available for project assignment is $19 million?
So, I'll use the street resurfacing projects as an example.
Yeah.
All of the projects, and that amount has been fully authorized many times, but since we bring the projects in under budget, those monies are being returned to the pot of money for additional projects to be assigned. So, we actually have $12 million in street resurfacing that's ready for new project assignments.
Okay.
And if, if it was in a category already, because that was approved by the council, it was staying within that category, so that it would come back with new projects within that category.
Okay, and so, we're just approving five of the $19 million today?
So the 19 is already in a project category. The 5.6 that you see at the bottom of the page is the excess collection total. We want to have your recommendation received from the board and your authorization to put the 5.6 towards the 19.
And it's broken down on the next slide?
Yes.
Okay, well, here's my comment. From Ward 5, one, we are the only ward in the city with zero trails. And I don't see anything being done to address that. Secondly, if there's a choice, because I'm not sure what you mean by street enhancement versus street resurfacing, we need street resurfacing. It's, it's terrible, and it's getting worse each day, just as roads continue to deteriorate. So, those are my two comments.
So on the MAPS 3 program, you may recall, there was some additional funding that was identified to finish the South Trail Expansion as part of MAPS 3 that's not a part of the Better Streets Program, but has been funds that the council has recently made available, and that project is proceeding to extend a trail and a bike into South Oklahoma City. We don't have the plans for that completed right now, but that's, work is beginning as we speak.
So are you talking about an extension along May Avenue or an east-west trail?
It, it is likely going to be combinations of both, so this is going to be better known as the MAPS 3 Trail that was extending towards the Will Rogers World Airport, generally down a Portland alignment, but the alignment's not 100% established, but it does have an east-west movement potentially along 104th Street.
Well, that's fine. That's all I'm asking for. That sounds great. Now, my other comment, we need a whole new safer, Better Streets, Safer City initiative because of the level of conditions of our, at least in Ward 5. Maybe all the other wards are in good shape, I don't know. But Ward 5, we certainly need resurfacing in the neighborhoods, on the arterials. So I would just encourage your group to keep that consideration in mind.
So what we will be bringing to the council this next month, following the approval today, is that next list of street resurfacing projects that will fully utilize that $12 million that you see on this page, and proceeding with those projects until those funds are fully exhausted. We also have the 2017 Bond Program resurfacing projects that are fully underway as well.
Okay, under the excess collection, we have leftover $5,676,000 and some change, right?
That has been collected over, yes.
How much of that 5, 6, 7, 6 is going to resurfacing?
Zero.
And, and what's the, what's the basis for that?
Well, if I go back one slide, there's already $12 million that's ready for allocation in resurfacing. It's the category that has the most money at the, at this time. The 2017 bond is also, has significant dollars that is also scheduled for resurfacing.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of like David, you know, the, the number one call I get are about our, the streets and the ward, and I sure wish some of that money was going to resurfacing.
Ward. And, and like Eric said, we've got a lot of other funding that is in the bond program, as well as what we have in this program, still $12 million remaining for street resurfacing that is putting an emphasis on street resurfacing throughout the city. And this was giving us an opportunity to address some of the projects that we identified needs in already.
And again, there's some existing projects that are just not funded to their full potential street enhancements, which we're not bringing the project recommendations today, but we are, we are struggling on Northeast 23rd Street Enhancement Project. We're also struggling with the Deep Fork Trail. Those are likely going to be two of the project candidates that we're going to bring back next month. That was a part of the discussion from the board. So it wasn't to not fund projects, but we're actually trying to finish the ones that are already started.
I'll also note, and y'all know I'm, you just heard me at the last budget, say essentially what Greenwell just said in terms of, we need a new bond package. Y'all know how I feel strongly about that. But when they took the property tax for the bonds and then extended the MAPS 3 sales tax, the bond itself, correct me if I'm wrong, $491 million for streets and sidewalks, right?
I believe that's correct.
I mean, compare that to a street enhancement. Like, that's, it's just, it's night and day. The streets are getting more money. I just really want to make sure. I would hate for a resident to leave this conversation thinking that, you know, street enhancements are, you know, pulling away from the much-needed street resurfacing. And Councilman Greenwell, like, a street enhancement, like, 39th Street right now, their street enhancement with the wide sidewalks and the streetlights for safety and the trees, never received anything in 40 years of being Historic Route 66, LGBT history there. They had like a couple million dollars for a street enhancement project. It's beautiful. It, it's important because it adds to the economic vitality in our sales tax coffers when people can walk from their neighborhood over to one of these commercial corridors and be able to grab ice cream. The new Boomtown Creamery just opened yesterday, or is opening tomorrow, went to the soft opening yesterday. Like, these things, I don't want us pitting them against each other, is what I'm saying. I think that would be a grave error if we did that. So I, you go ahead, please.
Maybe I'm, have a different perspective, just because I don't know of street enhancements that have occurred in Ward 5.
Good Jeff question.
Jeff, other planning director, the furthest south street enhancement I can think of is Southwest 29th Street. And that, I believe, is a bond project. But, but you're correct in, in the sense that most street enhancement projects do occur in more core areas of the city. There are older areas that, that are in need of kind of second or third generation investment. Whereas in the suburb, suburban areas, it's typically more, you know, resurfacing needs and so forth.
Well, I'd like to be able to say, we don't need any help in Ward 5, but we've got areas that certainly have seen better days. And we're getting zero funding for that. So, but we do have a significant issue in terms of the quality of streets in Ward 5, and so, that's the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Going to go ahead and do the annual report.
Yes, so let me move on to item BK. This is going to be the Better Streets, Safer City 2021 Annual Report. Hopefully, the council all received a hard copy. If, if not, we can provide these as well. And following your consideration of approval today, this is also something that we'll put on OKC.gov for anybody that wishes to see it in, in its full form and can download. This is going to be our fourth annual report. It's done in conjunction, of course, as Better Streets has moved forward. It's a, it's a partnership between Public Works, the Planning Department, the Parks Department. We also have a lot of support from finance and budget offices. The annual report that you're seeing today was produced by Shannon Cox, who's sitting in front of the council today, so we appreciate her efforts in getting us organized. You're going to find that there are 31 pages to the annual report, and these are just a summary of some of the items that are in there. You're going to see the financial overview. You're going to see, again, some of the numbers that we just presented with the total revenues collected of $263 million. You'll see those different revenues by each of the years and the progress that we've made over the past four years with the sales tax program. Moving on to the success, again, we're showing some of the highlights here on the right-hand side of this page. You'll see some of the success stories in year one, two, three, and four. But you'll see, you know, completing just dozens and dozens of projects over the past four years. We start looking at street resurfacing, and these are some of the grand totals that you can see. So the sales tax program has resurfaced 292 miles thus far. We do have some additional recommendations coming with the excess collection and the projects that are available. You'll see over 220,000 linear feet of curb and gutter replacements, over 153 intersections that have been improved, and nearly a half million tons of asphalt placed in Oklahoma City. As we move to the street enhancement projects, here you'll find the list of the seven, or excuse me, 11 street enhancements that are underway. Gives you that progress indicator with that little slider that shows you the, the status of each. These are the ones that have been a little bit more complicated. Each of the districts is unique. We actually added the, we added the Britton Old Town District Street Enhancement Project that's going to be the next item that I'm going to present to you. It's running a little bit later, but again, we've got all of these on track to begin construction by the end of the year, or the very first part of 2023. These are a summary of the sidewalk projects. Again, 29 school connections, 17 park connections, and 66 stop connections. And then moving on to the bike infrastructure, you'll see that we've placed over 3,300 bike delineators on tiered bicycle lanes throughout Oklahoma City. Not all of these projects are also complete. These have also been somewhat complicated as we've worked through the engineering and putting these into existing street infrastructure. These are some of the bike highlights. This is the work that's underway on Main Street here, just west of downtown. We're finishing up those final connections as we've made that connection from downtown to May Avenue, connecting existing bike and trail systems. And then this is the final slide that I'll show you on the annual report. Again, the report contains a lot more information than what we've shown this morning, but just looking at 2021 as a year-end review, 28 miles of new sidewalk, five miles of bike lane, we've resurfaced 140 miles of street, and 22 miles of trail was also resurfaced in the past year. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, it's a, it's a document just to really do a snapshot of where we're at. We are anticipating one more report in the next year as we finish up and get those projects into construction, so we'll be able to do a capstone of the entire program. Happy to answer any questions you have on the annual report.
Thanks, Eric.
And then last, item BL. This is the preliminary engineering report for the Britton Old Town Street Enhancement Project, which again, is a Better Streets, Safer City Sales Tax Program. You'll find that this is one of our later additions to the program. It was added here just in the past year. This is going to be Western, it's Britton from Western to Chertel. Little bit of a background on the Britton Old Town. It is one of the younger districts in Oklahoma City. It was annexed into Oklahoma City in 1950, even though it was part of a rail system in the late 1800s. It has some unique history. It's part of Route 66 from 1936 to 1953, passed through Britton, it's just a major conduit for travel. It also has a lot of historic elements that includes the Alcorz Motel that you see in this photo on this slide. As we look at the, as the district meetings have been held, stakeholder meetings have been, been completed. The Planning Department has led much of this effort as we reach out to each of these districts and gather their needs. So, each district is unique to itself, but it's, it's a, it's a link as we're creating those. So each district is unique to itself, but it's a link as we're creating those landscaping, lighting, and other amenities for the district. You'll find that this is the scope, and that's really where the focus has been, increasing some of the parking for the businesses that are there, ADA compliance, pedestrian safety and access, mention the lighting and the landscaping. This is what that Plumber Plan looks like. We're able to go through and reconfigure portions of the street. Traffic is supporting that we can create a two-lane thoroughfare on Britton. You can see the addition of the angled parking on both sides of the street, also with bump outs that will help with that pedestrian safety at the major intersections throughout that district. This is what that looks like as you head towards the east, crossing Classen Boulevard, and then going, again, further to the east along Chertel. So at this point, the project is within the budget. Budget's 1.6 million. We're looking to finish up the construction plans here very soon, but with the anticipated start of construction later with the completion in 2023. So with your approval of the Plumber Report, the engineers will move forward on the project, completing those plans, and happy to answer any questions that you have about the Britton Old Town Street Enhancement Project.
All right. Thanks, Eric.
Let's see. So I think that we have then item CT, a presentation, or did I skip one?
Councilman Greenwell asked about CS.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, David. CS, if we could hear a little bit more about this.
And Doug Dowler actually will provide the responses to the questions or comments on CS, and then on CT, he'll provide that presentation.
Good morning. Vice Mayor and Council Doug Dowler from the Office of Management and Budget. Item CS is with the Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. They've been operating the Rental Assistance Program for the city as well as for the state and a number of other localities since, actually through the CARES Program. Then we had the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. This is part of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Part Two that was funded under the American Rescue Plan Act. We were originally allocated 40% of our total allocation last year, and if we achieved certain spending targets through March, then they were going to release the second allocation of 30%, and that's what this relates to here. We had a cap on their administrative expenses that was only for that first 40%. This raises that cap to accommodate the additional 30% that we've now received from Treasury for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Doug, thank you. So here's my question. First of all, these funds are restricted by the federal government for emergency rental assistance.
That's correct.
Is that true?
Yes, sir.
So it's not our designation that was pre-designated by the federal government before they issued the funds?
Correct, right.
And we had to achieve certain spending or outflow of funds to qualify for any additional...
Show that there was continuing need for additional funds, yes.
Exactly. Great. Okay. So I'm going to ask you, and you may not know the answer to this, but if someone else in the room wants to answer, that's fine, too. Emergency rental assistance. So when this first developed, we were kind of in the throes of COVID-19. Individuals were, you know, getting laid off, people weren't able to work, and things like that. And that's what I thought this was designed for, mainly in response to that situation that I think we have grown out of. You know, I understand people continue to get COVID. I know of two people personally who have gotten COVID in the last few weeks, and they're well above their 60s, and they both are working and they're continuing, you know, after the necessary protocol of staying at home for five days or whatever, go back to work. They're vaccinated, now they get the IV once they've contracted it, and, you know, it's not a big issue. So in trying to relate this to, say, a medical perspective, I'm going a long way around to get to my question. If someone comes in, say, like me, into the emergency room of a hospital because I've tripped and cut my head open or something, you know, those things happen, they'll patch me up and send me all the way. If a few weeks later, I come back because I've fallen and I've broken my arm, you know, those things happen. Sometimes we're just not lucky. But after the third or fourth time of showing up in the emergency room, a good hospital will start saying, wait a minute, maybe there's some condition this person has that's impacting their medical health that's contributing to these accidents. Could be I've lost my sense of balance, maybe I'm not seeing things clearly, but it moves that person out of emergency treatment into some other form of medical treatment, more Are we identifying people who have just encountered a unique situation, and so they need emergency funding to help them with their rent? Or are we paying people now who have been collecting this rent assistance, say, for the last year? If so, shouldn't those individuals be looking to more long-term financial assistance?
So I do know that the Communities Foundation contracts with a number of agencies for housing stability services to help keep people in their house, not necessarily paying their rent, but having given them the services and things they need to stay in their house.
Right.
I do know as well, they've hired a person to specifically look for fraud and issues that may be where landlords or tenants are trying to take advantage of the program, and they're trying to address that to ensure that those people are not being paid for fraudulent claims. So I do know they're taking action to that extent. I don't know exactly the, what the limitations are in terms of how long you can be on this program. I can certainly look into that and find out what the limitations are in terms of as an individual, how many times you can apply for this.
Thank you. No, I'd appreciate that. And you addressed another issue. So beginning earlier this spring, or now in the summer, so last spring, just yesterday, the various inspector generals from the various federal departments began issuing reports in terms of how these COVID, various COVID funds were being used. And to no one's surprise, who deals with fraud and auditing, there's been tremendous instances of fraud taking place. Now, it's up to these various departments to go back and pursue those situations and try to recover to the extent that they can. The problem is, once the funds have been expended, it's hard to recover them. And so you've answered my other question. We don't know the details, but to the extent that you could find it, what actions are being performed to address possible fraud occurring in terms of perhaps the landlord and the renter colluding to get inappropriate funding? Perhaps various people getting together, utilizing the same address to be able to get funding? Just a variety of things. So maybe you could check into that and provide members of the council information as to what kind of fraud review is taking place. Thank you.
You go ahead and speak to the next one.
So then item CT is a contract with ASM. They're the operator for the Paycom Center, sometimes also referred to as SMG. This is also under our American Rescue Plan Act. The ARPA dollars that we received, we received 122 million dollars from the Treasury Department under ARPA. We have allocated money for addressing the negative economic impacts of COVID, and part of that is for tourism recovery in Oklahoma City. We already have a contract that was before the council a few months ago with the CVB to promote Oklahoma City as a destination, about 4.3 million dollars there. This contract is for $500,000 for a very specific purpose, to promote events at the Paycom Center to people that live outside of Oklahoma City, to promote them coming here for a visit, to take in a show, stay in Oklahoma City, and hopefully spend some money while they're here and generate some additional benefit to our tourism industry. So this is a $500,000 contract. It's good through the end of 2024, which is when our ARPA money has to be used or obligated by. And so each of the projects that ASM is proposing will have to be approved by a city staff person before any money is released to them for use on promoting events there. So be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, thank you, Doug. Okay. These are more general in question. So the city has received a total of approximately 122 million dollars...
Yes, sir.
...for COVID-related activities. How much of that 122 do we currently have available?
We've received half of it, and we anticipate any day we'll receive the other half. It should have theoretically been here by now. We put in the request to Treasury, but we have not received that yet. So I have alerted our Treasury Department folks to be on the lookout for a $61 million deposit.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it. I mean, well, some days I do worry about the financial condition of our federal government, but anyway. So how much of it, I should have said or asked, is earmarked? Of that 122 million, how much is left available for us to determine?
The plan that was adopted by council has allocated all 122 million dollars...
I see.
...for things like City County Health Department, the Alliance for Economic Development, the city projects for our revenue recovery, revenue loss replacement. I believe we have a little bit left in the health, responding to the negative health impacts, and just a little bit under the negative economic impacts. And then we have not allocated all of the funding for our revenue replacement projects as we were waiting to see what projects the state would fund to determine whether we were going to need to use some of that money for that.
Has the state made that decision?
That's what the legislature is working on this summer.
Okay. So how much do we have available for that economic loss to us?
So it's like, is it something like 13 to 15 million somewhere in there that hasn't been allocated to specific projects yet that we were holding back?
I don't have my spreadsheet with me.
It's around 13 to 15.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, thank you. That's, I appreciate that. So let me ask you this. I'm not setting you up or anybody, I'm just trying to get a better understanding. To the extent we, the city council has previously voted on how to allocate some of these funds, there's no legal commitment in terms of following through with that earlier identified funding process, is there? We could amend it.
We could amend it. The only thing I would say is if we have contracts that we've already approved that are in place and we've made commitments, but anything that we haven't contracted already, we could still come back and make adjustments.
Okay, thank you. That's great. And so, oh, never mind. Getting back specifically to this request, so this is more forward-looking as opposed to reimbursing SMG for any lost revenues. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct. This is not related to that.
Okay. So it's just to assist them in promoting Oklahoma City as a tourist destination?
Right. And they have to report back on their activities?
This is for spending outside of Oklahoma City to attract people to come to Oklahoma City.
Advertising, mailouts, whatever. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your patience through our consent docket. I believe we can accept a motion to approve in a second. Please. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, please.
My screen is locked up. I vote yes.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. And that gets us passage unanimously. Thank you, Council, and thank you, those in attendance. Thank you, city staff. This moves us to item 10, our concurrent docket, which I believe we can take with one vote as well. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. All right. We find ourselves at item 11, items requiring separate votes. We have item A, an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 3233 Northwest 10th Street, going from an R1 single-family residential, R4 general residential districts to R4 general residential districts. And I believe, did we have someone? Yes, we have someone here to speak, counsel for the applicant, if you wanted to come forward. Thank you so much. And state your first and last name and your address for us. Tell us what you're up to, friend.
Thank you. Michael DeYoung, just counsel for the applicant. And all we're trying to do here is correct a problem that we discovered. This facility's been operating for 30 years. It's on four tracts of land. Three of the four were already zoned R4. In the process of applying for some HUD financing, it was brought to our attention that one of the lots was not zoned R4, and so we're simply trying to correct that. This is going to have no change in what's going on there, no change as far as I know on anybody.
Thank you for that context. Councilwoman Hammond is not with us today, but I believe she might have reached out to Councilwoman Nikki Nice.
Yes, she asked me to designate her zoning cases, and for this one, she did ask that we ask for approval of this application.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll look for a second then, please. We have a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for yours. We'll move to item B. This is Ward Six and Seven, and this is an item on final hearing recommended for approval at 1010 North Oklahoma Avenue, 1324 North Oklahoma Avenue, excuse me, and 616 North Walnut Avenue from R4 General Residential, C3 Community Commercial, O1 Limited Office, and Downtown Scenic Highway Area Districts, to DBD Downtown Business District, DTD1 Downtown Transitional District Limited and Downtown Scenic Highway Area. Coincidentally, Wards Six and Seven. So Councilwoman, please.
Yes. What I will ask is that we defer this for two weeks. I did have a couple of questions that I wanted to get addressed.
We have a motion to defer. We're looking for a second then, two weeks. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, please. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. There'll be a two-week deferral there. Item C was deferred, which takes us to, and item D was deferred as well, item E as well. Am I wrong?
That's right.
That's correct. Okay, cool. And then item F deferred. Am I wrong? I have that written down. Okay. Which takes us to item G, and that is an item, ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, 2201 Northwest 12th Street from R2 Medium Low Density Residential District to Spud 1402 Simplified Planned Unit Development District, Ward Six. Councilwoman Nice, please.
Yes, I see someone has joined us, if you would like to...
Yeah, my name is Rob Elliott with Elliott Architects in the City, representing the property owner. She really is just trying to bring, the Spud purpose is to bring the property into conformance so she can get proper financing and also give her an opportunity to make possible future improvements. Zoning is R2, and the actual building that's there has more than the two units that are, that could be allowed.
Okay, thank you for that. This is another one that Councilwoman Hammond asked that I ask for approval for, so I will move forward with the approval that she requested.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We have a motion to approve in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. This brings us to item H, the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there any items here that a councilperson would like to draw our attention to?
Yes. As I have before, I would like to commend my folks at the Bryant Center. They were able to remove it from our unsecured, so it was stricken previously by our city manager, but I would like to ask for a deferral as we continue to work through what their next plan is going to be pertaining to this property for one month.
Okay. And it's... Okay, and it's, is that, is it B or is that C? C, sorry.
For item C, yes.
Thank you so much for the clarification. That's a motion to defer. Do you have a period of time, councilwoman?
Four weeks.
Four weeks, I'm sorry, thank you so much. Four weeks and a second, please. Passes unanimously, thank you so much with that four-week deferral. Any other? All right, I believe we can take the rest of item H with a motion and a second. Don't need to specify H2, by the way. Yes, H2 specifically. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and again, that's the resolution declaring structures dilapidated and for those structures to be torn down. All right, takes us to item 11I. We had the previously stricken items, but is there another one anyone would like to draw our attention to? Hearing none, we'll move to I2, and that would be the vote, we're looking for a motion and a second. Passes unanimously, declaring structures unsecured, takes us to item 11J. This is our public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. And does anyone need to call out an item there? Hearing none, we'll move to item 11J2, the resolution declaring buildings are abandoned. Looking for a motion in a second, please. Got them, and then cast your votes. Passes unanimously, declaring those buildings abandoned. Thank you, council. We'll move to 11K. Do we have a presentation out there?
We, we had a presentation at the last meeting. These two items, the fire sales tax and the next item is police sales tax, these align with the budget and they're just additional resolutions that are required to comply with the Journalary of Judgment from 1992.
Take them one vote at a time then. Thank you, city manager. That would be item K. This is the second public hearing regarding, as you just heard, the fire sales tax appropriation and the resolution regarding appropriations for the fire department for fiscal year 2223. We're looking for a motion in a second, please, if one exists. And we have that, so cast your votes. Thank you, council, passes unanimously. This takes us to item 11L, and this is the second public hearing regarding the police sales tax appropriations, as you heard city manager Freeman say. And then item two, there's the resolution regarding appropriations for the police department fiscal year 2223. Don't see we have anyone signed up to speak. Somebody from council have any comments? All right, we're looking for a motion in a second then, please. Cast your votes now that we have that. Item passes unanimously, thank you, council. Takes us to item 11M. This is a resolution authorizing city staff to submit an application for a...
This was deferred.
Oh, we deferred it? That's exciting. Thank you, forgive me.
Vice Mayor, before we move on from that...
Sure, thank you.
Can we get a little information on why it was deferred? Do we have someone maybe interested in doing something there?
Yeah.
I know we've been waiting on this thing for a couple of years.
We've continued working with the developer, and we're also looking at different options that we might have to be able to, to use the site if it wasn't the building itself to maybe use the site for another purpose, and so just giving us some more time to look through that.
Great, thank you.
And that deferral is through December 20?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thanks for your question, councilman as well. That takes us to item 11N, and this is a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust by the issuance of its utility system revenue refunding bonds. This also requires, or ask for rather, waiving competitive bidding, but do we have the...
Right, so we won't have the votes today to waive competitive bidding. We're going to go ahead and present, I'll bring Chris up. Chris Browning, our utilities director, is going to introduce Dennis Whaley with PFM to be able to give us a presentation of what this item will be. There's a portion of this we need to move forward, and so we're going to ask to amend this, and we'll explain that, the attorney's office will explain this in just a second, but we'll explain what we're doing here. We'll move the portion that we need to, to start moving forward with the sale, and then we'll come back at a later meeting, at the next meeting, and do the remainder of the items when we can get the votes that we need to waive competitive bidding.
Good morning, Chris Browning, utilities director. The Water Trust would like to take advantage of the current low interest rates in the market, so we would like to refund Series Bonds 2013, 15, and 16. We have a presentation this morning from our financial advisor, Dennis Whaley. Good morning, I'm Dennis Whaley with PFM, we're the financial advisor to the City of Austin, and have a brief presentation to discuss the refunding of...
City of Oklahoma City. Financial advisor for the City of Oklahoma City.
What'd I say?
You said City of Austin.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And the Water Utility Trust.
Look, we like the Houston stuff.
Well, I am the financial advisor to the City of Austin, and I'm also a financial advisor to the City of Oklahoma City and the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. All right. So a brief presentation to talk about the refunding of some Oklahoma City Water Utility Trust bonds. On page two, a little, a little background on Oklahoma City Water Utility Trust's financing history. Aqua issues revenue bonds for CIP projects. The bonds are typically 30 years in term, which coincides with the average life of the assets. Bonds are sold on the public market, and Oklahoma City Water is rated AAA, which is the highest bond rating available in the market. So why is the rating so high? It has to do with the strong financial metrics, two times coverage is maintained, strong liquidity is maintained by the trust, and then it also has to do with oversight, which is credit positive. Presentations like this to the mayor and council, oversight by the city manager, the Aqua trustees, and then the executive staff of Aqua, so, as well as very good long-term financial planning by the trust. So what we're looking at is a taxable refunding transaction. The reason it is a taxable refunding is we are more than 90 days prior to the current call date of the bonds, which means because of changes in tax law, we must do a taxable transaction. This transaction will result in about $32.9 million in cash flow savings, and it will, the more importantly, 32 million's important, but more importantly, it allows us to make some changes to the indenture, one of which is to remove the requirement for a debt service reserve fund when we issue bonds. It's a new market norm for essential service utilities that are very highly rated, that a debt service reserve fund is not required, and it will allow us to save money going forward as Aqua moves into a, a very large CIP as you build the, the pipeline. One thing to look at when, when I say that we won't have to do a debt service reserve fund going forward is for every $100 million of debt that you issue, not including a debt service reserve fund, will save you about $5.9 million. And I think over, and over time, this is going to be very helpful to ratepayers of Aqua as you move through a, a large CIP process. Page four, once again, $33 million in savings. Savings will be between a half a million and 1.6 million a year between 2022 and 2047. And something that I think is very interesting that we've talked about before, in 2020, we did a couple of refundings that saved Aqua ratepayers about $42 million. With this transaction, and then not having a debt service reserve fund going forward, you will be saving ratepayers over $100 million, and that's, that's pretty impressive over a two-year period, just not many people can say that. Looking at our timetable, we're drafting documents right now, and as a matter of fact, having rating meetings tomorrow to move forward with this transaction. We introduced the transaction and did this same presentation to the Aqua trustees on June 7th. Today, we are double docketed, talking to you to get your approval, and then we'll also be meeting with the Aqua trustees again this afternoon. Trying to move at a very rapid pace because markets are volatile, as you know, interest rates are moving higher, and we'd like to execute this transaction and hopefully find a, a, a good, smooth market for a few days to get that accomplished. Pricing will be July 12th, I'm sorry, July 7th, and closing will be July 21st. Now I'd be glad to answer any questions, and thank you so much for your time.
I have just a couple of general questions. You mentioned that this would be a taxable event, taxable to the bondholders?
Taxable to the, taxable, we would be selling bonds that would be taxable to the investors that buy them.
Right, correct. And they're already subject to AMT on these types of bonds, aren't they?
No, sir, not Water Utilities.
Okay.
They're, they're not subject to...
So this will just be a general taxable event to them, the bondholders?
Their interest earnings will be federally taxable.
So as we refund, it's not, it's not affecting existing bondholders? What it would do is, as we refund these bonds and sell new bonds, they would know that they're buying them as taxable bonds?
For regular tax purposes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ordinary income. So the bonds you have outstanding, the 13s, 15s, and 16s are tax-exempt.
Okay.
Both federally and state. In order to do this transaction before their, the current call date of these three series of bonds, the first one being July 1st of 23, you will need to issue the refunding bonds, the new bonds, on a taxable basis.
Okay. So roughly speaking, what type of interest rate would that require? And I know we won't know until July the 5th, I believe you said, in terms of what they're sold at, but roughly speaking, can you...
We're, we're looking in the, the mid 3% range, I would say.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, so I, I handed out the amendment that we need to make. So the majority of this item, we are not going to request to approve this time. If you look on the front page, there's a highlighted area there that we're going to ask to approve so that we can go ahead and get authorization to issue the, the official statement. I'll let Craig just explain this. So the amendment ultimately will bring us back to just that section four that's on page two is all that we're going to ask you to approve today.
Council members, the item that's before you, as noted in your agenda, requires six votes to authorize indebtedness and seven votes to waive competitive bidding. In order to solicit the best price on these taxable bonds, we are looking at a, a modified bidding process to get the best price and negotiations. But in order to go forward and to publish the official statement, we need your approval on that aspect of it, and that is in section four. So what we're proposing today is because we do not have the number of, of votes that we would need to have, we're looking at amending the item to just ask you to approve section four, which I believe is highlighted on the second page of the handout you received, and is identical to the one that was attached to the, the agenda. And to then approve the resolution as amended for just section four, and then the other items and authorizations will be brought back on July 5th in time to continue on the process that Mr. Whaley has outlined for you.
And in effect, what this will do, so we'll do a motion to amend, get that approved to amend this, and then we'll do a motion to approve that amended version. It'll basically strike everything else in this, we'll bring that back at the July 7th meeting, or July 5th meeting.
So I'd move to amend the resolution to contain only section four at this time?
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously as amended, and then a motion to approve as...
To amended.
As amended.
Move to approve the amended resolution?
We're looking for a motion in a second on that, please. We have a motion in the second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and we'll see this back on the 5th, is that right? Great, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to page 19 of our printed agenda. We have item 11O. I believe Director Winger is going to speak to this?
Yes.
Put some context. This is item 01, considered filed appeal, and then two, the appeal of the action taken by the Traffic and Transportation Commission on May 16th, 2022, approving a request for the addition of stop control on North Stonewall Avenue at Northeast 6th Street to convert the intersection to an all-way stop control. This is in councilwoman Nice's word seven, and I believe we also have a resident who has, two residents, thank you, who have requested to speak. Councilwoman, do you have an order in which you'd like to hear from folks since it's your word?
We'll start with Mr. Winger.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. It's not often that we have an appeal of the Traffic Commission, and that is what you have before you today. This is an item that was actually approved where the, the action of the commission has been completed. The actual stop signs at the location on North Stonewall and 6th have been installed for the commission's action, but you have a resident that's in the area that is actually wanting to appeal that decision of the Traffic Commission. So the appeals process is that this council serves as that appealing body. You've got the full application that you can see here. You're going to see that this was at the May 16th, 2022 meeting of the Traffic Commission on May 26th, following that approval of, of the stop sign installation. This Gloria Holt Dunlap at 1101 Northeast 6th filed the appeal with the city clerk's office. It was filed timely and in compliance with municipal code, and the basis of the appeal is that the addition of the stop control does not meet the traffic warrants and some of the criteria that may have been considered by the commission. Now, the commission has discretionary approval, and I will suggest that there are lots of stop signs that are approved based on applications and following a petition process. So at this point, the appeal is at the, at the council. It is your decision to either uphold the decision of the Traffic Commission, or you can actually overturn that here today.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman?
Yes, and let me say, this is my first time seeing this because of it appearing in our agenda, so this is why, this is my first time seeing the appeal as of when we received the agenda. So I had no notice of this before until then, other than going through the process and understanding what had taken place prior to. And I will preface this with that our word seven Traffic Commission seat currently is vacant, so there, obviously, when we're looking at what is happening and where we need to go with this, I am working to fill that seat, and I am very close to naming someone to fill this position, so this hopefully will not happen again. One of the, is Ms. Dunlap here? I didn't think she was. Okay, I understand. One of the things as far as with Ms. Ms. Dunlap, unfortunately, she is a person that I don't believe leaves her home unless she currently has to, so that is why we have a written appeal for, for this right here. But I would like to hear from those who have signed up to speak, and then I'll save my comments for the end.
Thank you, councilwoman. Let's see, I believe there's a Diane.
Yes, Red.
If you'd, okay, if you'd like to join us and state your first and last name and your, your address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, and there'll be a timer up there to help you.
Okay. Good morning, you council. I'm Diane McDaniel. I reside at 617 North Everest Avenue, and I travel to and from St. Anthony's for heart conditions and my diabetes. And as I... And as I travel west on 6th onto Stonewall, you got that in your mind? Can you picture it? If there are cars parked on either side, I have to go into the intersection before I can see cars. And if there was, if now that there is a four-way stop, everybody can come up to it. You can't park that close to the stop sign, so it makes traveling a little bit safer. And so, yes, we've increased in apartments, businesses. I do sympathize with Mrs. Dunlap on her conditions, parking, but I'm thinking about the safety of the residents who travel to and from, and the students who are at the Douglas. We need that stop sign in order to remain safe.
Not to you, ma'am, but could we get a map to see exactly what we're looking at? Is that possible?
If you look in here, you can actually see it as well in the packet. There are some diagrams that actually show where the stop sign has been located and the other information that goes along with it. And if you look on page 25 of that packet, it'll actually show you where those four-way stop signs have been placed in comparison to the spot speed study and the diagram and pictures of where those stop signs have actually been located. And that's unfortunately why I am concerned of just getting this right now to look at it, you know, within a day to really go through thoroughly of what we're looking at.
And we have businesses who have moved in, and it's really great for the community. I support the businesses and the apartments and the building of additional housing, but we need the stop sign again to remain safe for travel.
May I ask you this question?
Certainly, sir.
Is the reason given for not allowing the four-way stop sign, it would eliminate parking, the availability of parking on the street? Is that the problem?
Especially so close to the corner, sir.
Right.
You have to have the stop sign, and then you have to have the proper amount of feet from that stop sign so you can safely see around, okay?
Okay.
So that's the reason for...
The opposition.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
All right. Is it... is it Danveta?
Danveta.
Danveta, thank you. Appreciate you. Danveta, state your first and last name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you so much.
721 North Kellam, Oklahoma City. Danveta Davis. I am president of JFK Neighborhood Association. I've been before you several times on other issues, but here today because a neighbor has appealed the unanimous decision of the Traffic Commission, which represents the various wards here. And so, we support her right to do so. However, it's not about me, it's not about her, it's about the neighborhood. What can we do to keep our neighborhood residents and those who visit safe? And so, we have a traffic sign, I mean, stop sign on 5th that was approved, but that was not appealed. Also, on 6th Street, they've already been installed, as you've already heard, and we've already heard positive comments about them being there. Excuse me. We've already heard positive comments about those stop signs being there, just in a short time, I think about three weeks. And so, we, like I said, it's not about any one particular person, but it's about the entire neighborhood. Our neighborhood is growing, as you heard Diane say. There's lots happening in our neighborhood, and so we want to make sure that neighbors, pedestrians, those who ride their bicycles, those who travel on Stonewall are safe and that our neighborhood continues to grow, and we need to grow along with it. There are lots of other places where we could put stop signs, but this was a priority for us on Stonewall. So we ask that you not overturn the decision of the Traffic Commission, that you let the stop signs remain. I would hate to think about what might happen if those stop signs were removed and there was an accident, either serious injury or death. And so, we request, as I said, that you allow those stop signs to stay and that you not overturn the decision of the Traffic Commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
I've got a question to somebody. So there's currently four stop signs there, and this proposal is to keep them there, and that the Traffic Commission ruled to eliminate two of them.
To add two.
Oh, so there's currently only two?
There were, they had to, they added two more to make sure there was a four-way stop.
Right.
So that, the way the four-way stops, the new stop sign sits, is why we're having this conversation, is because Ms. Dunlap, it is directly in front of her home, where her home is located. So that's why she's appealing this decision. So that, and that's why she's not present again, because she can't see.
It is on the opposite side of where she lives. It's in front of Culture Coffee where the stop sign was placed, going north and south.
Yeah, thank you. One individual is appealing it, but the neighborhood is supportive of it.
Yes, we completed a petition. We met the requirements to get before the Traffic Commission. We met the requirements to appear before them. They reviewed that document, those documents, and they approved it unanimously.
So the Traffic Commission is in favor of the four-way stop signs?
Yeah, they've already been approved and installed.
I'm a little slow. Thank you. And this is an appeal of that decision.
This is an appeal of the decision to overturn it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council or from city manager?
Were those the only two?
Those the only two, yes.
Okay.
And I'll turn it back over to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Now, one of the things that I would like to do, and this is not going to harm it because they're already installed, but I would like to defer this decision for two weeks, so I want to go talk to Ms. Dunlap, and I hope you all are okay with that. Not a problem to do. And also, really just dig, dive deep into what I am reading, because I was unable to read that, because we just received it. So I would like to do that and talk with Ms. Dunlap, and return in two weeks to make the final decision for this.
So that's a motion to defer, I see on the screen. Do we have a second? We have a second. Cast your votes, council. Passes unanimously. Thank you to everyone who spoke, and thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, council as well. That takes us to Item 11P1. This is an extension of collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2406, until successor contract is agreed upon for fiscal year 2223, or June 30th, 2023, whichever occurs first, or we can enter into executive session. City manager, did you have any comments on that?
Yeah, so P, Q, and R are the extension of the ASME contract and the FOP contract and the IFF. This is something traditionally that we'll do to make sure that we can continue to provide the pay and benefits for our employees under this current contract in the current year, while we're still in the process of negotiating our contract with these units for this next fiscal year.
Thank you. So we'll start with P1, unless someone would like to recommend going into executive session on that. Hearing none, then we'll look for a motion in a second for P1. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Takes us to Item Q1 and Q2. So if someone would like to move to executive session, let me know. Otherwise, we will look for a motion in a second with the collective bargain agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. This is just an extension of that. So cast your votes. Passes 5 to 1. And then we will go to R1, Extension of the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 157, until successor contract is agreed upon, unless someone would like to take us into executive session. Hearing none, we're looking for a motion in a second, please. I think we are, right? Okay. My screen's doing nothing for those following along at home. Am I the drama? I would vote yay. And then that passes unanimously. Fascinating, okay. And then we will need executive session for Item S. This is to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for fiscal year 2223 with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 123, the International Association of Firefighters, Local 157, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Authorities. And I'm, my memory, I have a strong feeling I didn't name the Fraternal Order of Police when I mentioned Q1 earlier, so forgive me, I didn't mean any disrespect, but do we have a vote to move into executive session, right? We'll move that to the end of the council. Then motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Takes us to Item 11T, Claims Recommended for Approval. Do we take A and B with one vote, or we do one at a time? Okay, A and B with one vote, unless someone wants to enter into executive session. All right, we'll take them with one vote. Looking for a motion in a second. Got that. Thank you, council. Take a vote. Wait. What did they do?
On the screen, it says there appears is one, and it just has one A.
Yeah.
Oh, he has one A, B on this one.
There's one A there. Oh, that's weird.
We're good.
We're good?
Three dots. Three dots, okay.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. This takes us to Item 12, Comments from Council. We'll just head over to Ward 3. Thank you, Councilwoman. Ward 4?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to real quickly wish my daughter, Emily Overand, a happy birthday today. And besides that, on July 2nd, we were talking earlier about the event going on at Riverside Sport. I think it's going to be a good day. The, there's going to be events going on all day out there, but 4 to 6, there'll be some boat racing expedition, exhibition, along with some jet ski racing that I'm excited to see. After that is the dog diving championship, which I may enter that, I don't know. And then after that, a live band and fireworks out there over the Riverside. So I think it's going to be a fantastic time, really looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you, councilman. And then Ward 5?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ward 7?
Yes, I would like to second that motion of what's going to happen, and I will, I will just say, as far as the fireworks go, over that river, it is a beautiful sight. So if you just go down there for that, I commend you and say, please, go, 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 just enjoy that. But everything else sounds amazing, and I think we have a... Are you going to race your boat? Yes, I'm coming to see that. I already asked for a ride, so I don't know if we're going to get one, though, to enjoy. But just hearing all of the great things that are happening around our city, especially with the things re-engaging and folks getting back out again, these are the events that we've been waiting for. So I'm really hoping that our communities and our cities will take advantage of seeing something new if they haven't had the opportunity to enjoy, and especially being able to see the most beautiful thing the day before at that same location with our Shea Cooper and understanding the meaning of what it looks like to have inclusive rowing in our city and in our communities as well. I just wanted to say a huge thank you once again to our Parks Department for, and specifically Mr. Larry Burden of our Parks Department, for asking me to be a part of the inaugural Juneteenth luncheon that happened at Langston, Oklahoma City campus on Thursday. And there were quite a few city staff and our city family that came, and I just want them to know that it means a lot to have seen their faces to support this type of effort, because they could have been anywhere else, and the funds that were raised went straight to the Willoughby Johnson Endowment Fund for the Recreation Center, and we're extremely excited about that. So we hope to do it again next year. And I also wanted to commend Juneteenth on the east this past weekend, and I want you all to consider, and I did myself, I just didn't get to do it, the 5K that happened on Friday. Over 800 people signed up for this first 5K to run around northeast area, and about 600 showed up. And if you were outside Friday, it was hot. It was so hot, but those people showed up, and I just want to commend them for being a part of that first run and our first 5K within that area of our community, because it was amazing, and it speaks to why we need the beautification and the efforts that we're working towards, and specifically, the enhancements when it comes to even being able to have those safety measures in place for people to walk in these same spaces that we're a part of. So very grateful for that, and celebrating also our first federally recognized Juneteenth for our city and really for our country, and looking forward to being able to work towards other great initiatives and efforts that we have for our city. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I mentioned this earlier today, but on behalf of the Judiciary Committee, I do want to extend my thanks, great thanks, to Judge James, Judge Kiffin, Judge Hasbrook, Judge Gladwell. These survey results are outstanding. Please keep up the good work. And then I also want to thank the council for approving the penalty reduction program extension. It is also, not only a great source of revenue, but it helps keep our police out on patrol to keep our streets safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you. I'll just add from Ward 2. Am I allowed to do that? As Vice Mayor, speak about Ward 2 stuff during item from council? Just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to say congratulations to Ward 2's Starbucks location at Northwest 36th in May. They became our ward's first Starbucks to create a union, and they did so largely because of healthcare benefits, that there was such a strong increase in profits, decrease in hours, and that really put the workers in quite a predicament. And so, they organized, and they won 14 to 1. They've made it into Bloomberg, Teen Vogue, and, you know, it was a lot of, a lot of good organizing and a lot of good conversations around healthcare, workers' rights, trans access to healthcare. So yes, kudos to them, and thanks for inviting me to Shishma Hall to celebrate, which is just one of my favorite things that exist in all of Oklahoma. I also wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Nice for just the invite to join everyone for the Juneteenth celebration on the east side. Got to see one of my childhood favorite performers, Maya. That was just incredible, and you could just feel the energy in the crowd as she went from, you know, ghetto superstar into It's All About Me and, you know, Moulin Rouge, the Lady Marmalade. It was just, it was, it was electric. I really enjoyed that. Earlier that day, I got to go to the Windsor District, because remember Ward 2, its western boundaries are in the Windsor District, and got to attend their planter dedication ceremony there at 23rd and Meridian. I'm so excited about what Maps 4 is going to be able to bring to them, and I'm really looking forward to working with some street enhancement and placemaking investments there. I wanted to say thank you to our firefighters at Station 30. I took Craig Freeman and Chief Kelly up on what they might have thought was a joke, but they said, "Do I want to climb a 90-foot, 95-foot ladder?" And I did. I sure did. You're only a councilperson once. Well, we'll see about reelection, but I just had to. It was so great, and what was so neat is remember Ward 2, for those of you who've been longtime Ward 2 residents, Fire Station 30 only now becomes part of Ward 2. It's something with redistricting that's new there. And I got to go on a ride with them, something, you know, just as simple as monoxide detection in someone's home. You know, there were kids, had they not had our firefighters there... You know, there were kids, had they not had our firefighters there, those kids' lives could have been in danger. And this, this is the sort of stuff that our, our folk have to deal with all the time. I also just want to thank those firefighters for taking time before they got me up on the 95-foot ladder, for actually sitting down and talking with me through their concerns about homelessness, mental health, and what they're experiencing, what they're seeing in our communities as well. It was just a wonderful experience, I'll never, I'll never forget that. I also wanted to say thank you to the Plaza District, I know that's Councilwoman Hammond's Ward, but they hosted a pride event last Friday. Y'all, there were these, the children, they were just having a blast with their families. The drag performances outside were incredible. You, it was just like elbows to shoulders, you just could not really move. But it was because everyone wanted to see these young drag performers, you know, doing death drops in the middle of the asphalt, just incredible stuff to see Plaza celebrate pride like that. Same to Elemental Coffee that hosted a free all-ages drag show last Friday evening. Just wonderful to see all parts of our city come to life with all the cultures and backgrounds, and just hearing people, just, I don't know, everything from Juneteenth to planter dedications to drag shows, like that's incredible, y'all. Like that's our city, that's who we are. And then I wanted to say congratulations to Boomtown Creamery. I got to go to the soft opening yesterday of that. I don't really have a big sweet tooth, but I will tell you, if you put some peanut butter in some ice cream, it's over. I'm, but they opened and they literally, kind of going back to my comments about street enhancements, they decided to take a chance in Uptown 23rd District because of the investments local stakeholders have been making in the area. But what we as a city are about to do, as you heard Director Winger discuss earlier in terms of a street enhancement, placemaking investments there, but also, they had read Boomtown, and from Boomtown, they fell in love with us. And they were like, and I just always want, I keep saying that, but I always want us to remember that like, it's always good to look at the things in our past that aren't always as pretty, and combine that with what is, because therein is reality. And if we're honest about our story of who we are, more people will come, and the people who are already here will feel a sense of acknowledgement and pride, and that's what I saw yesterday as they were getting ice cream, so more of that, please. So thank you all so much, and thank you to Mr. Freeman, and Amy, and Debbie Martin for walking me through my, my first time serving as Vice Mayor in this capacity. And thanks to everyone who offered your support, I appreciate you. We get Citizens to Be Heard, which is item 13. We have Ronnie Kirk. Want to come up and join us, please? Just state your first and last name, Ronnie, and then if you wouldn't mind, your address as well, and then you'll have three minutes, appreciate you.
Yes. My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address, 20, excuse me, 2328 Northern Missouri, Ward 7. Everybody know me because they know I feed kids. I stopped counting kids five years ago, but I haven't stopped feeding them. For the Ebenezer Baptist Church, Pataskobe, for Easter, I fed their kids. Millwood had a soccer tournament three weeks ago, I fed all their kids. Home Northeast, 16th to Martin Luther King, we had Juneteenth for two days, I fed the kids. Everybody know about Juneteenth, they talks about it, but they don't, excuse me, they don't know who started Juneteenth in Oklahoma. Well, I know, because I did. I had an article in the Black Chronicle two years ago, with Miss Alexander, she was 104 years old. She was holding up, my city permits to block the streets off. My grandson was supposed to be bringing them, the print, my documentation, but he didn't make it. You know, over in Dale City, there's a horseshoe drive over there. Kids are playing in the street, having a good time, that's what kids do. So I put a moon bounce over there to leave out for the summer, so to keep the kids out of the street. They call me Mr. Kirk, Grandpa. I answer to anything that they call me, I love them all, you know. I started Juneteenth, I went to Texas in 1989. I didn't have no idea what Juneteenth was about. But once I went to Texas for the first Juneteenth I ever went to, 1990, I came back and started here. We heard, I was listening to television the other morning, Channel 9 say, Juneteenth started 20 years ago. Actually, it started 32 years ago. So that's what I come to tell you all this morning. I'm the one who started Juneteenth in Oklahoma, the first one. It was me, Ronnie Kirk, and thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. And then I believe we don't have any other citizens signed up to speak. We're going to enter an executive session now that we had set aside, and we will be back in a few moments for adjournments. Thank you. Thank you.